Okay. I gotta pull the right meeting agenda out here. Let's see.
And we're live.
All right, I'd like to call to order a June 18th school board meeting. And we'll begin with a pledge, the pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. I know we have two folks who have signed up for public forum. Let's check and see if they are here with us. Amy Brienne, I see her name on participant list, so Chris or Burke, if you could elevate her to be able to speak. Remind our participants that public comment is an opportunity for a community to share information with the board. It unfortunately is not a conversation point, but we appreciate topics being elevated to the board by community members. We hope you can use the time allotted, which is about three minutes to share information. And then we will certainly look forward to some presentations, maybe questions or follow up after this meeting. Amy, the floor is yours.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
You can, go for it. Okay, great, thank you. So I am a Maplewood mom, although my kids are in the early childhood center, I hope that one day they'll be matriculating on to elementary, middle, and high schools. And I'm particularly concerned about the presence of police officers in the form of SROs in school. I'm concerned as a parent, as a community member, also I'm a civil rights attorney. And so I've seen the impact of early police involvement in the lives of youth on how it's impacted my clients' lives, even as adults. And so I'm very concerned about increasing the likelihood of interaction with police officers early on in a child's life, including in the school environment. I'm especially concerned because the data seems to indicate that black students are much more likely than white students to be arrested by SROs, in fact, three times more likely. And the racial disparities are even greater for black girls. In Missouri, black girls are five times more likely to be arrested than white girls. It also shows a disparity with respect to students with disabilities. And students with disabilities being almost three times more likely than students without disabilities being arrested. And then the flip side of the data is that there's really no data that indicates that policing schools improves students' mental health or their educational outcomes, or even the overall safety. So again, I would love to see Maplewood get SROs out of schools or reconsider what a school resource officer has to be and that it not be a armed police officer or even an unarmed police officer and perhaps be a trained social worker or an occupational therapist or some other service provider that's not a law enforcement officer. Because the more contact that youth have with the police, the more likely that they're going to have negative contact with the police. And I think we all know at this point about the school to prison pipeline and the dangers with increasing contact with the police, especially for black youth and especially for non-black students of color and students with disabilities. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Amy. Appreciate your time this evening. Our other resident signed up for public comment is Jennifer Drake. She's in the participant list here. Good evening, Jennifer. I see you've been promoted to speak here this evening, and the floor is yours.
Everyone liked the promotion. Thank you, Katie. And thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Like Amy, I wanted to talk about the use of SROs in our district. Thanks to Dr. Hall, the many members of this board for your commitment and your work to advance equity in our district. I think that this is what this conversation is about. And your leadership on this front is very literally the reason my family is in this district today. So my son is now a third grader, but when he was four years old, he was diagnosed with an anxiety disorder that showed up as behavioral issues in his preschool classroom. We worked closely with the very talented staff at his early childhood center to ensure that they understood Noah and understood how to address his needs, not his occasions for discipline, but his opportunities for empathy, for understanding, and for comfort. But his father and I aren't naive. We understood that when a little black boy is angry enough to throw a toy or to hit another child, that the ability of some to see him as the curly-haired wonder that he is to us, who loves to sing and tell jokes and share his encyclopedic comic book character knowledge, really sees is, he becomes a threat. And we know in research documents, as Amy has said so thoughtfully in her remarks, that there's a through line from these disciplinary measures taken against black children to the carceral state. This is why MRH's policy not to use out-of-school suspension for children at the UCC was so important to us. While it's not perfect in its implementation, the commitment to restorative justice and repairing harm has been a safe entry point for us to have discussions with staff about how best to serve our child. And it's in this spirit that I urge the board to consider its other practices that make up this school-to-prison pipeline, leading the unnecessary contact with police. Simply put, I would like to see our district end its official practice of maintaining school resource officers on site. I'm a social worker and a consultant when I'm not moming it up. And so I took to social media to ask other parents and concerned residents what they thought about SROs and to share their children's experiences if they were comfortable. And really, folks have a lot of questions. So some of those questions are, how well do SROs work with our social work and counseling staff? Given that we're lucky enough to have robust mental health services, why do we need police in schools at all? Do we need more social workers? Do we need more counselors instead of police? Others wanted to see data. You know, what evidence do we have that police in schools make a difference? Or that the benefits to having them there outweigh the trauma their presence might cause some students? Do we track their contact with students? Do we track it by race? Do we track it by gender? Do we know what students think of having them around? And what are we really trying to accomplish by having them? Why are they armed? Do they detain children? On what basis? What are the protocols when they do so? So lots of questions. I also asked my neighbors if they'd be willing to share any experiences their families have had with SROs. The responses ranged from a few very generally helpful to uninteresting and to harmful. And keep in mind, this is an unofficial survey. We had an N of 41. The universe was my social network, so it's hardly representative, but I do think it's helpful. And I asked permission to share these stories, and many were willing, so I'd welcome any increases from the board and staff who are interested, but in the end of the time, I won't go into detail tonight. Every heartwarming story of an officer being genuinely helpful resolving conflict or mentoring students is really heartwarming. And I think the question we have to consider tonight is how many helpful stories are enough to compensate for the harmful ones? Or the fear that children might experience from having an armed officer present? My answer would simply be that there is no number. And what I would like to encourage the board to consider is, what is school without police with the flag? In this moment where frontline protesters, experts, advocates, and leaders are calling for less investment in policing, we should confront the choice that we make as a district to pay for policing our children in schools. And let's be clear, it's a choice, even if it is the status quo. I just challenge us to consider whether our definition of public safety can be broad enough and inclusive enough to consider that we can accomplish it without police. And we have data released very recently to suggest the department is not enforcing the law equitably. The traffic stop data from the Attorney General's Office suggests that black motorists are stopped twice as much as white motorists. These disparities persist in Maplewood and Richmond Heights. And we should really interrogate why we believe the practice in our schools would be any more just or any more equitable, particularly when we have options to care for students and to give them the tools they need to make healthy and safe decisions by investing in their mental health and their general wellness. So I would ask us to evaluate our use of SROs in the same way that we evaluate all our decisions with equity in mind. Who does it benefit? Who does it disadvantage? Who does it leave out completely? And what are the consequences for that? And if we can predict those answers by race, then we should probably be doing something different. And I, for one, am brave enough to dream up that something else with my neighbors and leaders. And I appreciate the history that this board has of being brave and unapologetic about equity. So thanks so much for your time.
Thank you, Jennifer. Appreciate your comments and appreciate that we'll have some opportunity to discuss this topic a little bit further with the audience of many community members this evening as well. So I believe this is just the beginning of this session. All right. I believe that's all the folk who are signed up for public comment this evening. So we move into the rest of our agenda. Can I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you, Wes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Our first study item this evening is around property and construction. I'm excited to be able to start to talk about this. Again, to our stellar community members who put their faith in this project and the district. So Julie, Dennis, hello Todd, the three of you here. And I'll mute myself and turn it off for the presentation.
Well, congratulations, by the way. Outstanding results. Amazing. And I guess you read the paper around all the districts in the metro area. You certainly came out on top, I think. So, very good.
It wasn't a competition, but it was.
You never know. You never know. So we do have an outline of items to go through and to keep our time efficient, we thought we would use a PowerPoint. And we would start, and I would walk through it. And we'll try to keep up the pace, so this won't take up your whole evening.
Yep, I can run it now. Let's see, here we go. All right, can everybody see that?
Yep.
Okay. We are going to briefly look at the schedule and the process, talk about where we're at and what our next steps are. Look, review the scope. So the decisions that we made with you all and the long-range facilities planning task force last fall that created and developed the scope for the prop e-work. We'll look briefly at the budget and the buckets that we're working out of essentially for each of the facilities. We'll talk about project delivery methods and then a little bit about how we intend to keep in communication with you all and with the community moving forward. Here we go. All right, so up here is the schedule for the middle school and the high school. We've broken this down into two projects, and I believe we've reviewed this before with you all. But just a couple of updates, as you know, we lost two months, so April and May. So we are starting here in June 2020. And currently, we are in pre-design. So we're doing land surveys, geotech investigation, as-built documentation. We've been in your buildings, measuring and documenting and making sure that the drawings that we do have are accurate and building our 3D models. Really shortly, we will get back into programming with the middle school and the high school administrators and finalize that with very specific numbers that we will be designing towards. So square footage areas for each of the spaces that we'll be designing towards. We'll start schematic design in early July, and we have two months for that. After that, there will be a review with you all again and a sign-off process there. And then we'll move into design development. That's where we really pull in our engineers, start to look at utilities, and also go back, in this case, to Maplewood and let them know what we're planning, just to make sure that they don't foresee any issues. We will do construction documents, which are details, are very detailed drawings throughout the winter, planning to go out to bid in the spring, April and May, and awarding the construction contract mid-May so that we can start construction in June. We have identified here a 19-month construction schedule that will be up to the general contractor, who will develop the final schedule for this. We anticipate it being at least 19 months, possibly a little bit more, probably not, much less, just based on the scope for the building. Elementary school and the early childhood center is a similar schedule. Because the projects are so much smaller, we have a little bit more wiggle room up front. But we are doing land surveys and as-built documentation on those buildings right now as well. We were planning to wrap up our programming with them in August, but we can meet with them earlier if they're available. Schematic design in the fall, design development. So this is a more compressed schedule because of the scope being smaller in these buildings. But again, we'll go out to bid in the spring so that construction can start, possibly some site work in May, and then we'll get into the buildings next summer. Wrapping up inside the buildings, hopefully by the end of summer, and then wrapping up site work by early fall. So that's about a six-month construction process at each of those buildings. So just big picture, reviewing our scope. At the high school and the middle school, what we ended up on was a approximately 34,000-square-foot gym addition at the northwest corner of the building. So that's that two-story gym piece and then the three-story wing with administration and classrooms and a new library. 1,500-square-foot bump out on the back of the cafeteria for additional seating in there. Site improvements at the west side of the site and in the courtyard, and canopy and fencing to secure the courtyard. These are the diagrams that we were looking at, I think probably early this year, January and February. Areas that are shaded are things that we intend to either build or substantially renovate. What I don't have shaded on here is the restrooms on either side of the original front part of the building that will be completely renovated and the piping will be replaced. So if you all recall, the basement of the addition was weights, wrestling locker rooms, and this is also going to act as the storm shelter. Some classrooms down there, shared classrooms, some serving line, and then renovations to the teen kitchen to turn it into additional kitchen storage, cleaning out the boiler room and creating a receiving area, wow storage and staging, a larger teen kitchen that will accommodate an entire class, and restrooms to serve the cafeteria. This is that cafeteria addition that will face out onto the track. Student Services Administration suites will move up to the addition to kind of man that new entry. And so this will be converted into high school classrooms. The alternative services will move up to the existing library. And so we're looking at enlarging the choir room and then moving drama out of the space under the stage that they currently occupy. So here's the new practice gym that will have seating for spectators. The Student Services Suite with the new high school entry here. Middle school administration and the middle school vestibule here. Some additional middle school classrooms and the alternative services in the existing library. And then creating that new route of circulation straight through your existing gym lobby and then to the main corridor in the high school. We'll also be renovating the locker rooms as well as creating new, larger locker rooms in the addition. So one of the efforts that we were working through with the administrators in the winter was just making sure that we were accommodating anticipated growth with additional classrooms and also making sure that both the middle school and the high school were getting more classrooms. So that's what the numbers on the classrooms are. Here's the relocated library. And we haven't really done much programming there, so that will be further developed. But that's on that third floor of the classroom addition. And then up on the fourth floor, when the middle school admin moves downstairs to man the door, this will be additional classroom space. Again, at the high school and middle school, the replacement of the major domestic water pipes and renovate the stacked restrooms. And then some of the items that are being undertaken by the district is window replacement, roof restoration, tuck pointing, RTU, the rooftop unit replacements, and new controls for the HVAC. At the elementary school, we will be renovating the three sets of paired restrooms to create inclusive and generally more restrooms that all of the students can use. We're going to combine and reconfigure the administrative suites and reconfigure the entry sequence. So move the nurse downstairs and create a couple of new interventionist classrooms in that administrative area. Railings and finishes at the Kiva, security upgrades, door hardware, shades on the interior doors, intercom, camera roughens, communication improvements, perimeter fencing. We will be addressing the drainage issues in the mulch field and also a new playground. The items by the district, so out of the prop e-funds, but undertaken by the district is tuck pointing, roof replacement, window replacement, restoring the skylight in the library at the elementary school. Again, RTU replacements and controls, that's the HVAC system, parking lot drainage, and curb and pavement repairs. At the early childhood center, we have looked at ways to secure the entry and renovating the office to add that back student entry so that the students don't have to go into the secure lobby space, and that's strictly for visitors. A loading dock lift at the kitchen delivery area, wayfinding and safety signage throughout the site, security upgrades, including door hardware, shades, alarms, intercom, camera roughens, and phone updates, the coiling doors in the piazza so that the children can shelter in place there in case of an event in the building. Site drainage in the plain areas and perimeter fencing at that building as well. And then the district will be doing tuck pointing and replacing the roof over the gym. So the buckets that we're working out, and these are rounded, we've rounded. So we have approximate buckets to design to. The high school and the middle school is about 25 million. Elementary school gets about 3.7. Early childhood about 1.1. And then the cost of issuance is an estimate at this point, but about 200,000. So that totals up to the 30 million. The owner-managed projects are part of that, but we did want to show what those total. So that's 2.9 for the high school and the middle school, 1.73 for the elementary, and then 300,000 for the early childhood center for a total of 4.979 that the district is undertaking, but is coming out of those prop e-funds. Dennis, do you want to talk about the project delivery methods and the different options there?
Sure, I'll let you hold the clicker.
Yep.
Okay. We have included in the budget, design, bid, build. And, but we do want to make sure we're all on the same page with the process. There's different delivery methods, and let me just kind of go through them diagrammatically. So go to the next slide. I'll let you kind of look at this for a second. We have what's called a trica. At the top of that triangle is the owner, the architect on one side, and general contractor on the other. The red dot is a bond, and that is where the general contractor is fully responsible to the district for their work and all the trade contractors that are the subcontractors that they bid to. It could be carpentry, painting, concrete, steel, all of those. A lot of times, it's perceived that the general contractor does it all, but they don't. They manage it, they're responsible for it, and they do some of the work themselves, but they don't do all of that work. So they go out and they get competitive bids from all the trade contractors interested. And they spend a lot of time trying to get the most competitive bids from each one of them. Otherwise, then the general contractor knows that they won't be the low bid come bid day. So there's that process, and that's fairly common, very traditional. Go to the next slide. So just to get rid of the trade contractors graphically, that's really the simple diagram. The trade contractors are behind the scenes. But to show what an owner's rep process is, is a lot of times, not all, but some districts, when they have from time to time, a peak in construction, that they'll bring on somebody to help out for that, let's say, a two-year period where there's just a lot of work and it's really sometimes difficult to overburden your staff that's already busy. And what this person is, is interview, it's a very experienced person. It could be an engineer, could be a contractor, but they usually have 18, 20 years' experience doing exactly this. They don't make decisions for you. Only the administration can for certain items, and certainly the board on other items. But the day-to-day, they interface and do the paperwork between our firm, the general contractor, and the district. It's not needed. It is a preference for some districts. We have kind of a toss-up with the districts that we work with. Sometimes they don't have one, and we communicate fine. In other cases, they feel it's necessary to have somebody on to relieve them from that duty. So, but in any case, even with an owner's rep, they don't make all those decisions for you. So if we're picking colors, if we're making some other kind of decisions and choices, it's really, we go to the administration first, and usually they can make a lot of those, but the board makes the larger ones. So there's that process. The next delivery, and I'll just bring the trade contractors back in, because they really are there. So the next one is construction management advisor. And what that is, is, you know, the designer is still there. Rather than having a general contractor that you bid to, you bid to all the trade contractors individually, and they become what's called prime contractors. So you ask, well, who manages them? The person that manages them would be the construction manager. And they're a professional manager, you've had them in the past, and they get paid a fee, percentage fee. And then they also get paid what's called general conditions, which is their trailer, manpower, all their expenses. But they don't have a bond. The people that have the performance bonds to do the work are each one of the prime contractors. So you ask yourself, what's the pros and cons between each one? You know, right now, we're working with several different methods. It really kind of gets down to the type of project that you have. If you have a project generally that has a lot of phasing, where you might need to bid to multiple general contractors at different times, generally, you wouldn't do that because you don't want multiple general contractors on the same site. So you would go with a construction management approach. There's an added cost for that, but there's an added benefit for that type of project. So with that, let's see, go to the next slide. I forgot what the next slide. Okay, then go back. So that kind of summarizes between, go back one more, see the diagram. That's the difference between the general contractor, which is called design, then you bid, and then you build, or construction management advisor. So go to the next slide after that. Whether it's the general contractor that has the bonds in place, or you spread that out and you have every individual subcontractor, which is a prime contractor, has a bond. There's three types of bonds. First one is a bid bond, and it says generally 5% to 10% of the project cost. That's kind of not a direct statement. That doesn't cost that much to have a bid bond. What they do is, if they don't want a contractor to submit a bond and then back out. And it kind of keeps the not responsible contractors from bidding, because they have to pay money, and they don't want to lose their money by submitting a bid and then backing out of it. The other one is the performance bond, which is really something that's important to have just in case something happens with the contractor. Don't know what it could be. We've only, I've only come across that twice in over 40 years' experience, and it's turned out okay. The payment bond is to make sure that the contractor is paying all their subs. You never hear of these things generally because they're behind the scenes. It's just, we're kind of getting into weeds now, and I wanted you to know what those red dots really represented. And that's what they represent. And then the next slide is a process chart. It's a step-by-step chart. Yellow is where we have been. Right now, we're at schematic design. And as Julie said, we'll have an owner's review and approval, update our cost estimates, and look at any alternate bids that you might want to consider if we get really good bids. And then we move on to the next phase, design development, where we start getting into all the material selections, the engineering. where we start getting into all the material selections, the engineering decisions, kind of the more detailed stuff. And then the construction document, and we do a review at that point, we do another update of our cost estimate. And that's an important step because from that point on, we're in construction documents. For many, it's called plans and specifications. And that's kind of the legal document that we'll be bidding, that the contractor will sign with the district. And it describes in great detail that the work and the quality of the work, and all kinds of other terms and conditions that's hopefully favorable to you, not to the contractor. Then they do the work, and at the end, they obtain a certificate to occupy the building from the city. And then we do final inspection and make sure everything is there. What it doesn't show, we come back about 10 months later and do another walkthrough to just make sure that everything that's under a 12-month warranty gets picked up. And then you have three-month, three-year warranties, then you have 10-year warranties, you have 20-year warranties. So you have a whole bunch of warranties, kind of like on your car, and for everything that is, that you paid for, that we need to enforce. So that is that last slide in that sequence. And I guess the question is, is, is the owner's representative something that the board wants to consider at this time?
Yeah, thanks for presenting the three paths that this could take. And maybe Julie, would you maybe flip back to the slide that shows those different configurations? Obviously, we've talked, we talked a lot during the propy buildup here about how this is really a historic-sized project for us. And so, you know, doing this project with some slightly different levels of supports than we have with other projects, I think, does make a fair amount of sense. And, you know, would certainly, other board members' thoughts and concerns, and, and potentially from admin team too. This is something I think that's being presented this evening, and would also probably need to be decided on by us fairly quickly here too.
We happen to have, at the current time, names of four very qualified people that you would consider. You would interview them. We would develop a job description and review it with the administration and board, outlining kind of roles and responsibilities, who communicates to whom. It's fairly straightforward, but it needs to be, you know, complete. And then you simply sit down and interview them. We can either sit in on it or not. It's really, at that point, whoever you interview, they should all be very capable. We wouldn't let them to the table if they weren't. And you pick the person that you feel most comfortable with in terms of fit. And I'm sure you've been through that process before with other roles. It's very similar. What's favorable to an owner's rep is that in the construction industry, it's not always a full-time, long-term employment in construction. It gets cyclical. And there's people out there, some are better than others, that are owner's reps, and that's what they look to do. And they look to have someplace that they can be at for two years solid, or three years solid. And the larger districts use them more than the smaller districts use them.
But Dennis, thank you so much, Julie and Todd, because this is the second time our team had an opportunity to hear this. And the schematic here is really helpful, or the graphic, it helps display how everyone is related to one another. And after my team, we had an opportunity to talk. Just so the board knows, we really feel comfortable with the design bid build outline and, and how that works. So I've just, it's the first time they've seen this, and we do need to make a decision. I know it's like a lot to take in, and they may want to talk amongst themselves a little bit more or to think about it and come back. But I did want the board to know that this is the second time we've seen it. And again, I appreciate the diagram. And we've had, I know Chris and I, we've talked at length. And then also we pulled in Roxanna as well. Dennis, we also thought about a potential person, because we didn't know when we first listened. As we were trying to process all this, because board, when we first saw it, we really liked. We had to think, and we had to talk to each other a little bit to process. So we pulled in Roxanna as well and had a conversation about potential individuals in that position, as in a good fit with the bigger scope of who's working here and all of those things. So yeah, I just wanted the board to know that we have seen it, we've discussed it, and this is our recommendation.
Thanks Karen, yeah, I would echo. I, I, I think this design bid build option is worth exploring. For what Katie had said earlier about the scope and the historic size of this project, the schematic and the way it's described, it feel like we have more direct contact with someone who, if we choose carefully and wisely in terms of their experience and oversight on a project like this, we'll have more access to them. Just for those who've not been through a construction process on the board, I think historically, Karen, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but we've done, we've done the other, we've done construction management in the past with our other projects. While it's sufficient at times, it, it, you, you, you aren't in constant communication with that individual. They sort of present things in a, in a very, you know, construction project-oriented way, which is, which is fine, but it's also, for the novice, it can be a bit overwhelming. And so I feel like this model gives us an opportunity to really engage in deeper dialogue with someone at the owner's rep position maybe than we've done in the past. And, you know, I, I, I would appreciate the thought around deeper oversight and insight on a project like this.
Yeah, and then that's, it's the day-to-day nitty-gritty piece, and then having someone take care of the oversight and then report to the superintendent about what's going on, which of course is also going to report to the board regularly.
Yeah, I feel like we'd be more impactful on getting stuff done in a quicker period of time. Previously, the construction manager would basically come to board meetings and only update us on as events happened. And it was not always the greatest communication cycle in some respect.
I really can't add much more to what Frances said. I think it was very well stated. The, the word that I keep coming up with with this model is I think this gives us a little bit more confidence based upon the size and scope of this project being kind of historic for the district. So I'm in favor of us, you know, investigating this further.
You know, one of the types of owner's reps you might also consider are past school administrators, who's kind of filled that role, primarily that role. And they would be a pretty good fit, I would think.
Yeah, thank you, Dennis. I, I think it's, yeah, we're, we're lucky to have such an experienced, you know, company as ITNER to be working with us. I think we also, you know, have some relationships through other kinds of contracts that we've done in the past as well that we can draw on. So yeah, I think we'll need to regroup a little bit on some specific folks. But we have another board meeting where we can make some decisions to this effect coming up.
Okay.
We could add this to that agenda potentially.
Well, thank you for listening through all those diagrams. So it's simple when you deal with a day-to-day, but when you only deal with it once in a while, it can be very complicated. The next, and probably one of the most important other topics is, is communication. Because it went well up through the referendum, but now it needs to go even better all the way through to, to completion of the project. So I thought, Julie, you might take us through and talk about the websites and some of the other things that we discussed with the administration.
Sure. So, so as we said already, you guys got overwhelming support for the referendum. And we want to make sure that the, the people who came out and voted despite COVID and, and other things like that are kept up to date on what's going on, what they can expect to see next. And one of the things that we talked about earlier this week was what, what can, what can they see now? And how can we communicate to them where we are in the process? So that when they don't see, when they didn't see cranes and, and excavators and things like that out on site on June 3rd, you know, what's, what's going on? So one of the critical pieces is to keep the website up to date. We can provide photos, we can provide 3D model videos, fly-throughs and things like that. We can provide a list of what's next. So what are we doing and what can you anticipate seeing next? That you all can include as a piece of your website. We plan to do monthly progress reviews with the board. Another thing that we talked about was getting construction signage up even now. So even though there isn't construction yet, you can do a, a big board that kind of says, here's our anticipated timeline. Maybe it's like a checklist where we have, you know, HVAC improvements, building envelope improvements, construction begins, you know, next spring. And then you can check things off as we move down the line so that when people come to campus and are on site, they have another visual reminder of where we are in the process. We can provide, once construction starts, site tours for the board and for the administrators. So we'll get everybody hard hats and, and all those fun things. And then we also plan to keep you updated on digital project files. So the schematic design document package, the design development document package, the construction document package, those are all things that we will provide to you and hopefully keep in a location that is accessible for all the board members for easy access.
You know, we, we recognize that when questions come up in the community, they, they call the board members. And we want to have the files available to you that you can dial in at any time and, and pull up a budget report to look at a drawing, whatever you want. You can print them out, and it's public information, but only access to the board and administration. So hopefully that, that'll make your lives more enjoyable.
Those questions don't always come at a time to conveniently call us either. So you'll have a way that you can find some of that information on your own.
Yeah, I appreciate the forward thinking about this. Obviously, this is a big project, a project taking place over a timeline that we, you know, also haven't necessarily experienced before. And so a lot of pieces that will be ongoing for a, a, a good amount of time here into the future. So thanks, appreciate your partnership on that as well, ITNER team.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments from board members? All right, well, we will move along in the agenda then this evening.
It's exciting.
Yes, it is.
Thank you, Dennis team.
Yeah, thank you, we'll see ya.
All right, we will move along then to our program evaluation on K through sixth math. And a few changes here, I guess. Lose Julie's screen and pick up somebody else's.
Chris, you'll need to activate Cindy Heemanstreich, Abby Smith, and Rachel Ward, who are all here to speak to this topic.
Hey, Abby.
Okay, they should all be with us now.
All right, I see Rachel, I see Dr. H's name. Great, all right, well, welcome, and I'll turn it over to the three of you.
Okay, right.
Able to share their screen, Chris.
I believe Rachel is going to share her screen. All right, good evening. I'm here with Rachel Ward, who is our coordinator of assessment, and also our sixth through 12th grade math curriculum action team leader. And Abby Smith, our K6 math instructional coach. And then I'm here as not only the ECC principal, but the K6 math administrator. So we're here this evening to talk about our math program evaluation. Our math work has been a collective effort over the last six to eight years, and much has been accomplished through deep work. Yet, despite all of our efforts, we still have disparities that we want to better understand and increase our responsiveness to. And we are also seeking the answers to the fluctuations in our overall student performance in the area of math. Our questions were many, and we needed to design a context for the program evaluation that would help us uncover our most powerful leverage points. This program evaluation was designed to answer the why behind the fluctuations in our student performance across the K6 grade span. We asked ourselves, was it changing standards? Misalignment of assessments and/or units to the new Missouri learning standards? Was it a flaw in our assessment design which resulted in our testing being mismatched with the required depth of knowledge? Was it instruction? And/or was it staff effectiveness as related to staff turnover? These are the questions we sought to answer, and we will share our findings, relevant data pieces, recommendations, and our next steps. And as a bonus, our COVID, our response to COVID-19 school closure. So right now, I'm going to turn it over to Abby, and she's going to review where we have been over the last six to eight years.
Good evening. Before hearing about the current progress happening with our MRH elementary math program, it's really important to know the history and context of the work we have done. So as you can see, since 2012, MRH has spent a lot of time working diligently on K through six mathematics. So during that time, we have done continuous PD around inquiry, research-based math. We've developed pacing guides that were aligned to the Common Core state standards. We have peer-reviewed all of our internal assessments, trying to make sure ours were at the same level or higher of those being used by the state. We've continuously monitored and revised our tiered intervention programs for students not making progress in math. And since 2012, we have funded the mathematics coaching position to support teachers in their content knowledge and their instructional practices. So we have spent a lot of energy and money to make sure that we have solid supports in place for our math program.
Thank you, Abby. That was a great summation of our collective work over the past eight years. Throughout the time period that Abby just described, we have been analyzing data. We've looked at grade level data as well as cohort data. We have compared the state assessment data to our internal assessments. We have utilized EdgeaClimber to help us become laser-focused on helping students by strengthening our responsiveness. As I shared with you last year during my equity presentation, we have also used case studies to better understand where students are struggling and then invest strong effort into creating classroom-based interventions to support student growth. Having said that, a program evaluation calls us to look at all Having said that, a program evaluation calls us to look at all the components that contribute. To a highly effective curriculum programmatically. When looking at overall school performance, we had to ask ourselves, what trends did we see? However, that's proved difficult with an ever-moving, ever-changing. Target created by changes in standards and high-stakes assessments. As a part of our program evaluation, we reviewed our data and what we can say in summary is. Overall math performance has fluctuated from, for different cohorts of students over the years. We have performance disparities related to our subgroups with highest gaps in free and reduced lunch status. And race. However, when we look at growth data and do case level analysis, we see positive trends in student growth. But not necessarily progression to grade level proficiency. As you are all well aware, it takes highly skilled certified teachers and specialists to help students who are below grade level. Show growth. Your support and commitment to meeting the needs of all of our students and ensuring that we have the tools we need has been invaluable. Our responsibility as leaders of K6 mathematics is to ensure our curriculum is solid, sound, comprehensive. And aligned to Missouri learning standards. For the audit, we had to look at what was causing the greatest impact on our student achievement, which Rachel will summarize for you in a moment. Was it the change in standards? The curriculum and resources alignment due to change in standards? Was it our assessment construct? Was it aligned to the level, the depth of knowledge that we needed? Was it our instructional approach? And what was the impact of staff effectiveness and turnover? Because of the complexity of these factors, we needed to stop and have a broad, comprehensive audit. As a part of our program evaluation by a knowledgeable outside expert. Who well knew K8 mathematics and had an expertise in, expertise in teaching through inquiry-driven practice in urban areas. We knew this would give us the best picture of how to move forward by creating access to high-level mathematical thinking for all. Rachel, Abby and I spent innumerable sessions looking for a point of consistency that we could share with all of you. From 2012 to now that could illustrate what we have seen in the data. We reviewed our best thoughts about the way we wanted to present the data and then met with Roxanna to confirm we were on solid ground. And now I'm going to turn it over to Rachel and she's going to share what, how we looked at this data.
Good evening. Thank you. Um, so as Cindy kind of implied here, and you are well aware, there were many, many changes. Most recently, we had changes in standards and assessments. With the state specifically, and it was very difficult for us to find a common measure to show you. So I created this graph and it's one you have never seen before. It's data you've seen before, but I'm just presenting it slightly differently. Sorry. And the only thing, the consistent measure we have. Over time here is how we, how MRH performs compared to the state. So what you are looking at is the gap or the performance comparison of MRH to the state. In grades three through six from 2011 until 2019. So as you can see in 2011, all the way up through 2016 even, 2015. We were noting that we were, our grade levels were significantly above the state average. Most of the time, which is what we want. We want to be at or above the state average. So when you're looking at this graph, zero, that zero line means that we are the exact same as the state. We would be the same, our percent of proficient and advanced on the map in the EOC would be the same as the state. Or in this case, it's all map. When we get above the line, that's, that's how much above, a higher percentage of students we have that are proficient or advanced compared to the state. And below, we are below. What we noticed when the test became consistent and the. Standards had been realigned, the tests have been re-normed, the standards and re-leveled and all of that. We noticed in 2017, we weren't as high above consistently the state average as we would like. And then in 18 and 19, we were just at and below the state average in more than one grade level. You know, and it was just up, we noticed that pattern and decided that we needed to, like Cindy said, take a step back and look at the whole program. Do the audit to make sure that we were aligned to these new standards and these new assessments. Or we'll take a second to see if there's any questions on that graph.
Okay. So as I hope we have conveyed, a program evaluation and audit. And an audit are complex processes, particularly when the context is so layered as it is with our mathematics curriculum. Having said that, we had to break down the audit into manageable chunks or phases. So our partner in this was Jeff Kennedy or is Jeff Kennedy and he is with Washington University. So the first, in the first phase of the audit, he looked at our. He looked for alignment between the Missouri learning standards and our grade level pacing guides. Our unit assessments and unit ago, and unit goals, our curricular resources, which are. K through three investigations, context for learning mathematics. And then when you move into fourth grade, it's connected mathematics program, or you might have heard CMP. Also context for learning mathematics and we have a computational fluency strand. His key takeaways were that our curricular resources and our assessments provide contextual problem-solving opportunities for students. And covered the majority of the Missouri learning standards. There are minor adjustments that need to be made to the pacing guides and the scope and sequence. Unit assessment revisions needed for realignment to Missouri learning standards. And we have a plan to address the assessment components. Moving on to phase two of his audit. And I would, I would want to take a moment and just say, after phase one was completed, we did share this with our K6 math. Cat team and they were able to unpack it and study it and ask questions. So then we moved on to phase two. Jeff reviewed lessons and he was looking for alignment to the Missouri learning expanded grade level expectations. He was looking and evaluating the level to which we use inquiry-driven instruction. As well as the level of cognitive demand required of our students to complete tasks within our current lessons. He was looking for the evidence of the National Council of Teachers of Mathematics Process Standards. And he did walkthroughs at the elementary school. He had planned to do them at ECC, but with the closure that did not happen. He will continue that next year. But he did do observations of teachers' practices during walkthroughs. His key takeaways from the second phase of the audit was. That we absolutely have high-quality curricular resources that are utilized and are well-aligned to the process standards. He also found that the process standards in conjunction with the task analysis guide should be used to develop and evaluate daily lessons and tasks. And this was really an important part of the phase two audit. He confirmed what we felt as we were discussing this, that it, this is our highest leverage point. Our highest leverage point. And that is to develop the capacity of our teachers to design lessons that reflect the five standards in conjunction. With the ability to construct tasks that create access for all students to higher levels of cognitive demand. This is the area that I will tell you our teachers leaned into because we, we shared the second phase of the audit with him. During our snow makeup days, we had three rigorous days of math PD. And when this was presented to the teachers, they leaned in, they sat up. They said, this is so helpful to them. They are excited about this work. And we actually already begun this work with the process standards and the task analysis guide during those PD days.
And I'll just chime in for just a bit. That is an attachment for you. So if you're interested in what the task analysis and the process standards look like, we, they, they did upload that as an attachment for you.
Yes, thank you, Roxanna. And you can go on to the next slide. So the overall findings of the audit, as I've mentioned, is our curricular resources and assessments provide contextual problem-solving opportunities for students. And covered the majority of the Missouri learning standards. That was really important because we weren't sure, based on those fluctuations, were our curriculum resources aligned anymore? Were they high quality? Were they going to take us where we needed to go? Jeff clearly stated that they were. It's building that teacher capacity for what I just discussed as the most critical element moving forward. But he did confirm our curriculum resources are high-quality and inquiry, and, and will support inquiry-driven practices. And I think I said, that's that other bullet there. Then there's opportunities for growth. We did need to make minor adjustments to our pacing guide and scope and sequence. That's another area when we met with the teachers. At the very end of May, after school closure, you know, COVID-19. They came and they met with us virtually and we did three days of PD. And Rachel and, I mean, I'm sorry. Abby and Jeff were able to share the pacing guides with them and the revisions that we had talked with them about in phase one. Again, they were excited. They leaned in. They made comments like, this is exactly what needed to happen. So they are on board with what we are talking about and what Jeff is sharing, which is really exciting. We have high-quality teachers and they want to do the best for all of our children. I've already mentioned the NCTM process standards in conjunction with the task analysis. Are the things that we need to do as we develop and evaluate our daily lessons and tasks. So as I've kind of already mentioned, some of the things that he has suggested to us, we've already been able to make movement on. We already have revised the pacing guides in grades two through six and Jeff and Abby worked very hard on that. So I appreciate all of their work. The curriculum assessment team has been established. So Abby will be working with a group of experienced teachers this summer, along with Jeff Kennedy. To review what it means to create or how you create high-quality assessments. What are the key pieces that need to be present in order for our assessments to meet the level of. The depth of knowledge that, that's required. For students to show mastery on our state assessments. So they will be meeting this summer. They will be making some revisions. And then Jeff will be reviewing those revisions. They will go back to the CAT team for feedback. And then the CAT team members will be sharing those with their grade levels. We already, as I've mentioned, explored the NCTM process standards with the K6 math teachers. We provided professional development already and practice with the task analysis guide. And again, the teachers were already thinking through their lessons and how they could change the task, how they could construct higher-level tasks. To create access to students to higher cognitive demand. And then now thankfully, and I want to acknowledge the board's support in. Offering or in approving additional math specialists, both for ECC and the elementary. Intervention happens in the classroom. It can happen out of the classroom. It can happen by the classroom teacher. And now we have high-quality math specialists to support it either in or out of the classroom. And this is, this is a key step in, in moving forward to support our students. So I think I've mentioned most, most of these things. We will partner with Wash U. We will, we have a very clear plan for our K6 PD next year around high-quality instructional practices. We will implement learning labs where one of the staff, Jeff, will probably work with the elementary. Another staff member will work with ECC. Teachers will work together collaboratively to design a less, a lesson. And then we'll all go into a classroom and evaluate the effectiveness of the lesson. And in the moment, make changes as needed as they're listening to student responses. Very excited about the learning labs, as were the teachers. I've already mentioned, there's going to be, we're going to have PD and feedback on our assessment revisions. And we are also going to take a look at our current intervention structures, which honestly, in the area of math is mostly classroom intervention. We're going to look at how we can improve that and now with math specialists, how they can either push in the classroom or work with small groups. In or out of the classrooms. We're going to implement the new pacing guides. We will continue instructional coaching for new teachers. Abby now will have some math specialists at the elementary school that can support her in working with our newest teachers. Abby started a reflection series last year that will continue this year. And then we will continue with our K6 math collaboratives. That happened at both the ECC and the elementary school. And I would also add, we, I received recent word that we did. Receive a $10,000 grant from Washington University that will help pay for this professional development next year. So that was very exciting and I'm happy that I can share that with you tonight. All right. And then during, during the closure. What we did in the early days of the school closure is we identified the priority standards that needed to be taught by the end of the year. To our students remotely. And then we also attended DUCI trainings on best practices for addressing missed content. And they were very clear, what our task is going to be next year is not to just squeeze in and fit in those units that we might have missed. But making very intentional instructional decisions about how to integrate the content that was missed. Are not covered as fully as we need it to be, along with the new content. So it's going to take some really careful thinking and planning to make that happen. Because we can never have enough hours in the day to teach all of the units. And so they are really stressing that need for intentional decision-making moving forward. And of course, we're going to need to use formative assessments to determine where students are. Obviously, remote learning was successful in some situations, maybe not as much in others. And so it's up to us. We are obligated to figure out where the students are and meet them where they're at now and take them forward. So that concludes our math evaluation. And if you have any questions, the three of us are here to hopefully answer them for you.
Thank you, Dr. Hebenstreich and Ms. Ward and Ms. Smith. I appreciate all the work that you all have done. To collect this information and go through the assessment. I, I have to say, it's very concerning to see the. District MAP EOC mathematics by ethnicity. And I understand that you all have a lot thrown at you and you're having to juggle a lot. But my, my concern right now is just that. Huge difference between our African-American students and our white students. I understand that the standards are ever-changing. But it seems like even when they change, our white students are still able to. Succeed fairly well compared to our African-American students. And so I'm wondering with the lessons that our teachers are going to work on, going forward and collaborate on. Are those lessons going to be. Multi-tiered, if you will, because we can see now that we have some students that are drastically behind. And so I'm just wondering if these lessons are going to take that into account or if, are they just going to. I don't know, just, just be kind of leveled, if you will, and, and taught with us knowing that there's a disparity here.
Yeah, I, I will absolutely say that my personal problem of practice that I've been working on for the past two years. Is creating equitable differentiated opportunities for students. is creating equitable differentiated opportunities for students, regardless of what grade level or what classroom teacher they have. And we are hopeful that in taking our students through continual learning of the process standards and as Dr. Hebenstreich said, building their capacity to evaluate resources and lessons and develop a differentiated lesson using the task analysis guide that I believe you guys may have already looked through. We're hoping that that provides them even more content knowledge and how to differentiate the content for multiple tiers of students. So that students can all be working together inside the general ed classroom, but have it meet their individual needs. And it's absolutely a continual need that we've been trying to address. And we are hopeful that in the learning we do with Jeff Kennedy with our teachers, that that better equips them to continue to improve it because it is still a major need.
So if I can add to that, Nikki, you know, we always want to make sure that we're differentiating our lessons, not just related to ability level, but also cultural responsiveness. So that's definitely part of the training that we're looking at. One of the key hinge points that they did say in their presentation, that I'll just remind the board, but earlier this spring, you did let us hire some additional math supports. One of the things that we're looking at is our math intervention, because if we look at our internal data, what you saw on this presentation and what you typically look at is the state map data. Our internal STAR data shows that our students are making a year's worth of progress in math, but they are not catching up to their cohort group. So when we look at the Missouri MAP data and what you're seeing is students that are proficient and advanced, we have a large group of students are in that basic category. They're very close to being proficient, but they're not yet proficient. We can look at our STAR data and see that they're making forward progress. So part of our theorizing is, you know, we need them to have math instruction at their level, but they also need to be with their classmates to benefit from conceptual ideas that everybody's getting at grade level. So we don't want to totally remove them. We're hopeful that these new staff members will help us do push-in support so that kids who are right there making progress are actually getting a little of both. They're not getting further behind because they are encountering grade-level ideas, but they are getting math instruction at their level. Because if we don't do that, they don't make forward progress. And I know that's probably a lot more detailed answer than you wanted, but to answer your question, we are thinking about that in multiple ways.
A question too. Are there any other schools that have been able to successfully close this gap or really cut it down? I know that we are pretty pretty high up there as far as being innovative and really trying to attend to our students' needs. But I just was wondering if anyone has been able to tackle this issue and if there's, you know, something we can learn from them on how to just bridge that gap better?
We are constantly looking at that. I think we see schools in three categories. We see schools who do a really good job with mathematics and kids come away with conceptual mathematic knowledge, which preps them for math. We also see at the elementary level, some schools who get really good scores because they teach to the task, but their kids don't do as well when they get to secondary. One of the things we're very proud of is our secondary scores are really high, which means we're helping kids get mathematical problem-solving skills, but we are not seeing those high scores in our elementary schools. So we're trying to figure out how to do both of those things, make sure that we're building conceptual mathematics and every kid's making year of progress while also catching them up to make sure that they're proficient. So to answer your question, there are some schools that are doing it. We're trying to look at how, but we also want to make sure, at least I feel very strongly, so let me speak for me. My number one goal is that we get every student in our system through Algebra II successfully because we know that is the hinge pin for college success. And I want every child that leaves here to have enough mathematical reasoning that they can do anything they want when they leave us. So we've got to keep both of those things in mind. That answers your question.
Roxy and I have another question. You mentioned that our teachers are going to be trained like on the cultural aspects of our students. When they're being trained on that, is that also going to include them possibly confronting any implicit bias that they may have? And that's not just for a focus on race, but that's also a question on gender as well.
Well, exactly. And so I would say we are doing two very distinct, we do training in multiple areas. So we've got social-emotional learning training that we do. Karen and I are working really hard to get a cohesive training lined out that would involve new teacher training in the area of implicit bias, but would also be ongoing training in terms of just social justice issues and equity and what that looks like in the district. But the training this program evaluation is really hinging on is making sure that our teachers are well-versed in inquiry-based mathematics and basic mathematical concepts. One of the things we know at the levels where you're seeing those fluctuating scores is we had a high amount of staff turnover. I do believe that the staff members we have right now are highly talented and, as Cindy said, are leaning into this training. So those are all things we have to think about. We won't necessarily be doing the implicit bias training in the content mathematics training, but it is a parallel track of training that those teachers will get. And then we hope to, through our coaches, have the crossover conversations about how one affects the other. Because when we're looking at lessons, that implicit bias piece is one of the elements in the scoring guide that I use when I sit with teachers and audit their work.
To the thread here about our staff specifically, I see the bullet point in the presentation about training for new teachers on our curriculum. It's my understanding that we are able to get a pretty granular level of data through the EduClima software. So is there also efforts to identify maybe some of our veteran teachers who are showing patterns of, you know, kids not grasping certain concepts or, you know, kids who are consistently, you know, underperforming where we want them to perform?
That very much was something that was happening. Abby, I believe we confirmed when I talked to you earlier in the week that almost all of our math teachers are now new within the district within the last two years. So if that was a problem, it no longer is, but we are still having to look at what that means and trying to use that as a growth model so that teachers are aware of their own scores and are actively seeking out others who may be doing better in certain areas. The reflection process that was mentioned, Abby has teachers recording themselves teaching and they are meeting after school to watch those tapes and talk through what went well, what didn't go well, what went well for certain groups of kids and not others. So that's something that we have actively embraced just within the last year.
That's great. I empathize with how challenging that that can be, having done that myself in the classroom, but it's a good exercise as well. The one other question or just sort of concern to raise, I mean, I think it is a great resource to have additional mathematics support through, you know, interventionists. I also would like to hear maybe a little bit more though about what we are doing proactively to make sure that kids who receive math intervention don't start to internalize some sort of thinking that they are bad at math. And, you know, just wondering, I think obviously kids can go from malleable mindsets to pretty fixed mindsets quickly around math.
Cindy or Rachel or Abby, would you like to address that?
So I would just say, in my tenure here, we've not had, we've never had math specialists or any consistency with any type of math intervention consistently K-6. And now I feel like we have a full team. And I actually have already talked with Dr. Thompson, the new principal of the elementary school. And I want us to meet as a K-6 specialist, math specialist team to really talk about what you are speaking of right now. And we have also asked Jeff, you know, to give us guidance on, you know, what is best practice with intervention? What is the research saying is the most, you know, successful and effective way to approach children who are not at, you know, the level of proficiency we need them to be at yet? So those are definitely conversations that we will be having in the coming school year.
I will just also say, the hiring for those positions has been really intentional. Some of our highest-quality math teachers are currently holding that position. We did an internal transfer this year from one of our very successful newer math teachers. And literally, part of the reason she got that job was because she talked extensively about how she did not want kids to feel stigmatized. She wanted them to know math was fun. She wanted them to know math could do it. So part of her whole goal is to change the culture around that and create bridges from the support they need to the classroom. So I'm very excited about what we have learned and how we're beginning to implement all of those pieces. And we actually were kind of sad that we didn't get to do math testing this year because I was quite certain that many of these scores would be better. So I know most of the state was disappointed. I was really hoping that I could show you some-
We had several teachers that shared a lot of disappointment.
And I would just also say that while COVID-19 has been tragic for many, there have been some things that we've learned through the experience. And I think that using video recordings of teachers' instruction that students can go back to, that they can pull up at home at night and listen to the teacher's instruction again, pause it, stop, replay it. I think some of those pieces are going to be instrumental in helping us create greater connections between home and school and shoring up our instruction in reading, writing, as well as math. And it was very interesting, the teacher that Roxanna was referring to taught 6th grade. And she said it was very interesting and eye-opening to her that some of the students that struggled the most in the classroom in math were shining in this remote learning setting. And she thinks it's because of some of those pieces. And, you know, they're sixth graders and their parents were even sharing with her that their children were, there was something happening that was really connecting with their child. So we need to learn from that. We need to lean into that and figure out how to incorporate those pieces into our instruction in the coming school year.
Great. Any other questions from the board? No, this is a topic of major importance to us, both the topic of mathematics instruction and certainly the disparate outcomes that our kids have been experiencing. And so glad to dig a little deeper into those topics with you tonight. Thanks. Appreciate you joining us.
Thank you.
Thanks, team. Excellent. Great report.
All right. I guess we're getting a presentation next from Irene about food bids.
Hi, good evening. Okay. Do I need to work the PowerPoint or, yes, Chris is nodding his head, yes?
Yes, please. It's very difficult to read cues remotely.
Okay, let me forgive me, this is my first time putting PowerPoint on Zoom, so just a little bit. Okay, so hello, once again. This is my food and supplies bid for the next school year. It's pretty straightforward. So for those of you who are new to this, I have to follow USDA guidelines on how to put a request out for all of my different distributors and vendors to get the best price and also incorporate different aspects of, like their service, the quality of the food, that type of thing, to determine who will win this award. Sorry about that. The budget for this upcoming school year has been raised somewhat. So my food bid raised 3% to $315,600. And my supplies, which are my disposable, so like my disposable trays, silverware, plastic silverware, sorry, not regular silverware, and then my chemicals for my dish machine, sanitizing, supplies, disposable gloves, things like that, has been increased to $28,800. And the request for proposal is the type of bid that I put out. There are different types, but I think this one fits our district the best where, once again, I can award bids based not only on price, but with additional characteristics such as like the quality, delivery times, things like that. And as always, we always want to promote our Farm to School or CED table program. And I try to find those locally grown items, locally processed items from different companies. So our main vendors, these are vendors who can supply our frozen goods, our dry goods and our refrigerated goods. Those are four companies that I sent these bids to. Cisco St. Louis provided no bid, which is okay. That's fine. And then our specialty vendors specialize in one type of item. So Sun Farm is produce. Industrial Soap Company does a lot of the disposables and chemical items. And then Prairie Farms handles oat milk. So this is the breakdown between the main food vendors and our specialty vendors. So Coal, 182%. Last year, they about got 70% of our bid. And then 11% went to US Foods. And then the little yellow triangle went to Sun Farm and Prairie Farms. So we do have less vendors than I had last year, but that's kind of, well, once again, based on if I was able to get that type of quality food that I wanted and pricing. These are three companies for non-food supplies. So once again, Coal is a major factor in that one. Industrial Soap is a local company, came back pretty strong as well, 37% of the non-food supplies bid. And then US Foods has my last 7% there. And then still trying to promote Farm to School, CED Table. Our current farmer that we use now is McCaskill Family Farm. They grow rice down in the Boot Hill area. They also grind their own cornmeal, which is nice. So we do have whole cornmeal to use in our cornbread applications. And basically, right now, from previous time I was out presenting to everybody here, I want to make sure that my staff focus on skills training and try to train them in-house. So when we do receive fresh produce again, we can break them down efficiently at our kitchens. You know, last time I was trying to partner with Hickey College and before that was with SLU, the Nutrition and Dietetics Program. But clearly that hasn't been sustainable and hasn't really been as continuous as we would have liked. So let's focus on ourselves and start with a strong foundation by training my staff and giving them different abilities to prepare the different foods and give them confidence and make, you know, and really show them that this is what we're about. And then the second part is to try to focus on one new local producer to use throughout the year. I'm looking at companies that have already packaged, already processed items, already cut. You know, if I was looking for something like that. I know there's a yogurt producer, Windcrest Dairy, who's out of Illinois. I know there's a yogurt producer, Windcrest Dairy, who's out of Illinois. And they have the right type of products that I could sell to my school. So I'd like to reach out to them. I'm also looking for a new flour producer. I know wheat grows around the state and trying to find somebody who's able to do that, or at least very close nearby. And realistically, it's going to be quite challenging with all the upcoming changes. I'm hoping to still have my staff learn and grow, I think is probably the most important part, grow as a team and to provide the quality nutrition that our kids rely on. And that's very brief. I'd like to open up to any questions if you have any.
Just thank you for all that you do.
You're very welcome.
Yeah, thanks, Irene. I know you and your team have continued to work very hard through challenging situation here with COVID and.
I I think that, yeah. I'm I'm very thankful that most of, sorry, I'm going to scream so weird. Most of my staff was able to come back. I think that's huge and just shows, once again, our commitment to our kids. You know, we're here for them and that's what we do.
All right, well, thanks for coming tonight and keep moving on the agenda here.
Thank you, Irene. You're a rock star. Appreciate you.
Thanks.
All right. See, our last study item is a presentation on security resource officers. Dr. Hall.
Yes, thank you. All right, try and clean up my screen here a little bit. So, good evening, everyone. I am happy to share this reflection around SROs and dear officers. I want to thank Nikailan's leadership around this. And I have built the presentation around her inquiries. So it was a good moment for me to really think about, you know, why we have the officers here and, you know, specifically thinking about the contributions they have to the MRH community. And I wanted to make sure that I added the dear officer so we can be as clear as possible about the police officers and how they're split. Because we have two cities and there's two different approaches. So we don't want to conflate the two because it is different in how we're approaching, you know, the use of of police officers. So it is a snapshot with timeframe and everything. So I appreciate the the comment from Katie that this might potentially be additional conversation because I think that would be very appropriate. So thinking about this here, as I mentioned a moment ago, Maplewood, that police department only provides an SRO for our two schools in Maplewood. However, if there was a need or request from the administration, then of course, you know, they have shown up there to support that school. But by the books, technically, we only have one SRO from the city of Maplewood. So what I'm wanting to share here is just, you know, these four bullets about what are their functions. But more than anything, I would like to have my team here, my administrative team, really elaborate on what they know from their perspective from working with the SRO. So first person I would like to bring forward is Vince and how his department, if those of you listening are not familiar with Vince, he is our Director of Student Services. So Vince.
I'm here. Yeah, I'm happy to chime in. It's a good topic, timely, always good to reflect on our practice, you know. Again, I'm Vince Estrada, Director of Student Services. Just started in my 25th year here. So had an opportunity to watch this position evolve over the, even since the 90s, when the the idea of law enforcement, particularly in schools, was very, very different than it is now. So I'm happy to share by our experience in working with the SRO. The student services team, just so you know briefly, is all of our school counselors or school social workers. And I'm I'm actually a licensed clinical social worker and and our nurses. That's really the the core of our student services team. I guess I'm their team captain. It's a wonderful staff. And when I think of our SRO, so when I think about our current SRO, I have to remind myself, I'm not really speaking about him. He's outstanding, actually. But I want to think about the structure of the position and how we think about the job, not just the person who's in the job. Because it's always easy to think about the person and how kind they are and how wonderful they are with their kids. But it's more important for us to think about why that person is here to begin with, no matter who fills that spot and what what they're here for to support. I would say the SROs, we see him or her, whoever's in the position, is a member of our team and a support person. I think one of the things that's been very helpful with the SRO partnership is in working on wellness checks for students that have mental health issues and they're not coming to school. And we've done home business and we've done some of our other practices. And he actually just, he follows our lead in our partnership. He's there when we ask him. He's not there to take the lead on those things. He does have crisis intervention training and is skilled. So that's been a very helpful partnership. We do have a responsibility to do child abuse neglect, support for families. And he's been a good partner in that as well. And on the rare occasions where there is a law enforcement concern, because he's built relationship with the families and students, he's able to intervene in a way that does not, the students don't experience, experiences threatening. And he's able to really kind of navigate some difficult things for our students and families. So he's been extremely helpful. Or the SRO has been extremely helpful. I would say, most importantly, though, they're not used for discipline. And they're not used for ensuring that the place is safe in the sense that they're screening people at the door. There's no battle detectors here, as you know. And they're not, our staff don't call the SRO because of this discipline problem. And our administrators rarely call the SRO to discuss with a discipline problem. That's that's something that we work with, with our restorative framework to kind of support our students and families. And that position has evolved. I remember when we had the SRO initial MOU many years ago, one of the things that our previous superintendent wanted to be clear about in terms of our partnership was that the SRO was not going to come here and arrest students that had outstanding warrants, for example, that they knew had missed court. That's not what this place is for. They're there to do the opposite, to improve relationships with our families. And one of the other ways we use our SRO, it's been a good partnership, is that when we have some of our older youth have a negative experience with law enforcement in the community, our SRO can help kind of solve some of those problems and help us navigate through those as well. I'm involved with Joe's Place. And there was an instance, for example, when a couple of our Joe's Place had a negative interaction with law enforcement. And our SRO helped resolve that issue. So they're good partners. There was a point about whether or not the SRO carried a gun here. Honestly, I couldn't remember because I don't think about him or her that way. And the last point I wanted to make is when the SRO position opened back up here recently, I was, and they always invite us to interview the staff. I think Karen sat in on that. And I was blown away with the level of diversity and quality of folks that came to that to interview for that position. They really represented the student body we have at MRH. I've never seen, I was so impressed. And so anyway, that's been my experience. I do think that it's worth always reflecting on our practice about why we use them and why they're here. That's important. It's healthy. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Vince. And the other administrator that I would like to hear from, so you can hear from, like, the adult side of things, is from Roxana. Roxana, you're muted.
Yeah. I actually interact with the SRO much less frequently than than Vince does. But I will tell you that from time to time on our campuses, when we think about secure campuses, we do have some random and strange events that have occurred over the years, including adult strangers who've somehow managed to come onto campus or into the building who've been under the influence. Sometimes we have parents or guardians who may show up under the influence or in altered states. And we are afraid for student safety. So of course, we have to hotline. We occasionally have employee conversations that have to happen in situations that are less than desirable. And I will tell you, in every instance, I partner with the SRO, as Vince has said, and I always take the lead and I am always the one who has the conversation because it's important that administration do that. And I know the principals do those things as well. But it is nice to know that four doors down, there is someone who could back up if we had a safety incident. I've never once had to call him out to handle a situation. And he has always been very respectful and appropriate. Well, we've had multiple SROs. They have all been very respectful and appropriate in allowing us to take the lead, but being around and the peace of mind that that provides is important sometimes because we all want our campuses to be safe. We all want to feel like we can do our job. And and sometimes the situations can can be tense and we're not sure how certain things are going to happen. So that that is something that I think has been a very strong partnership in terms of knowing the need, but letting the district administrators handle the conversations and handle the, handle the action. So I would just say that they're very good at that. The other thing that I have done from time to time, obviously, you know, I talk to our attorney quite frequently. But occasionally, when we have search and seizure issues or things like that, I also am able to get advice. And in every situation, the administrators have handled the issues. But after consulting, it 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 is a relationship piece. It's very much a relationship piece and knowing that if it has to take the next step, we have someone who who knows what's happening and knows our wishes in terms of how that should play out. So.
Thank you, Roxana, for that. So I'm going to move on. Again, this is all the inquiries that were presented to me and just in a concise way, trying to respond. One of the questions that came up was around how long? And Vince, you can kind of weigh in on that. I think it was, I know. I say, just by thinking about the time that I've been there and knowing that there was history prior to me, I'm thinking approximately 20 years.
Yes.
Yeah. So again, is this something that we have to do? And I think that's a really good question. And currently, it's not a requirement. It's just strongly encouraged for schools, Missouri schools, to have an SRO. And if someone is a law enforcement person, they need to be a security resource officer, which requires a certain training that they need to have in order to be in that space. However, this spring, during the Missouri's abbreviated 2020 legislative session, there was something called House Bill 1961 was introduced, debated and voted out of committee. And I'm just telling you this because it is out there. So I'm giving you some some background. This bill would have made it a requirement that each school building have an armed school safety officer. And I know it's hard to think pre-COVID now for many of us, but that was talked about quite a bit is, you know, the conversation around armed school personnel, like teachers, for example. So this is kind of residual of that time period of ensuring that we have someone in these spaces. So the safety officer, not necessarily a police officer, but a safety officer could be a teacher administrator, retired police officer or an SRO. The safety officer could be a volunteer or be paid. So the bill also further to add teeth to it, stated that if a school district did not comply, the superintendent or the principal could be terminated. So all of that was in the House bill. So I just want you to know that there is an appetite for this. Not that I agree necessarily, but just to give you some background. So moving on to the other half of our district in Richmond Heights. So there is not an SRO, like I said in my introductory remarks, we only have a dear officer. So dear, this program has been around for a very long time. And this program, of course, the officer has to be trained to go through it. And there's a curriculum, like this is a national program that cities adopt. And so it's really around, you know, say no to drugs. And honestly, and maybe Vince, you can weigh in on this. I think this has been around since the 80s.
Probably, for Schumer. Yeah.
It's been around forever, so.
I mean, it's it's an old program. It's and it's and they have, I mean, there's there are officers that provide, sort of as an old, it's actually, it had its roots in the Just Say No Drugs era of the 1980s as a kind of education program delivered by law enforcement, members of our law enforcement community as a way to kind of have a different experience with law enforcement as in an educational setting and a non, you know, non-criminal experience, I suppose. And but so this, it's been around for a while. We've had their officers at MRH working with elementary school for decades. Pre days my time there. They've often been with Richmond Heights. Often, depending on the structure of the police department, they're also doubling as what they call a juvenile officer that they'll handle the majority of any juvenile cases around child abuse neglect or juvenile crimes and things like that. So they they have an expertise. And I think that works generally well because they have an expertise of being with young people, which does take practice, honestly. And so, yeah, so their officer in Richmond Heights does come in. I believe they work with the fifth grade, I want to say.
Yes, or this is great.
Yeah, this is great. And they come in, they have a curriculum and it's been around for a long time.
So, yeah, it's a packaged program and curriculum.
Yeah.
All right, so a question about discipline. And I know this was mentioned in previous comments, but no. They are not here, both type of officers. They are not there for discipline. They do not facilitate, respond. They do not take the place of administrators or engage in any way in disciplining our students. So if by chance there's a nexus to the law, then they may engage. And so an example of one that happened quite a bit in terms of our laptops, I'm going to direct to Chris, when, you know, he is wearing the hat of being the technology administrator, what his experience was with the SRO.
Thanks, Karen. Fortunately, we are, our theft rates have decreased significantly to the point where they are hardly existent anymore in the in the recent five years. When we started our one-to-one back in 2016, however, we did see there was significant theft, both from our students and by our students. The computers were quite valuable. And at the time, we were doing regular police reports either on behalf of our students because they were either stolen from their homes or their cars or off their person from time to time. That happened a couple of times, unfortunately. People just yanked the computer off their kid's shoulder and ran off with it. But partnering with the SRO, that's really how I began to develop the relationship with the police department. We we were able to partner to, that SRO was able to work with the families to help them through that situation. And unfortunately, we did have one situation where one of our students had organized a theft ring, if you will. And we were able to thwart that. That was the one thing that happened inside the school that is not a shining spot in our one-to-one program. But it did happen. And the SRO, I believe, handled that in a very appropriate way, as well as the administration. And again, as as all the rest of the administrators have spoke, the SRO was very willing to take the lead, or excuse me, to let the administrators take the lead and to follow, follow along and be able to respond in ways that were consistent with MRH's values. And I think that that was something that was incredibly important. And another thing on the recovery, there, there were quite a few trips that the SRO and I made to various pawn shops to collect the computers that were stolen. I don't like talking about this. It's not the best, best thing, but it did happen. Since then, though, those thefts have stopped for all intents and purposes. And I've not had to engage with the SRO at that level. The other areas that we've been able to support is when things around the school or in the school happen, being able to provide the the police department with the necessary surveillance and intelligence that they may need to help solve that. And of course, when it comes to student discipline issues, the police department, if if something were to become criminal, they have to subpoena that, those records from us. We don't just have a, we we aren't able to legally hand over any student discipline records that may be in the form we we aren't able to legally hand over any student discipline records that may be in the form of surveillance videos to our SROs. So if if something were to happen with one of our students that was a criminal event, law enforcement is required to go through the regular legal process in order to acquire those records. So.
Yeah, thank you, Chris. So again, in my opening remarks, I said that this was a good exercise and also the beginning of thinking about our relationship with the police departments and me in particular. These are just some of my reflections and recommendations to just pause and think. And all this is very timely right now, what's going on with our nation. So, you know, here reviewing and updating the MOU is critical. Just really spending time to ensure that it is, it's reflecting our current reality and we're very clear about our roles. And it's a good practice to regularly look at MOUs anyway, and that hasn't been occurring. So that first and foremost is to have that conversation and then to also transparency is another thing that's been on my mind through this whole process and bringing it, especially now with what's going on, to bring forward the MOU and the discussion to the board. So you all are aware of what's going on. And the evaluation process. So currently, what happens in all of this is has not been a problem, but again, as I reflect, this would make the relationship and the partnership stronger, just in in my reflections. And that is the supervisor from the police department requests, you know, our input. So I then facilitate that solic- solicit, soliciting. Soliciting, I can't think right now, ask the team to put forward their thoughts and reflections about the program and then also the performance of the SRO. So everyone has an opportunity to to share what has happened and it hasn't always been glowing. I mean, there have been points where we've had some concerns and I've found that leadership over in the police department has been responsive to that. But I never know what happens after that. I don't know what the evaluation actually looks like. And it would be nice to be able to have more input beyond just what we think and those brief narratives. So that's what that represents. And also the program, we know how we've worked over time together with the SRO, but there aren't any clear deliverables on what this program is doing. And so if we could articulate and then have metrics around that program would help with the level of transparency for everyone. But yes, they're partners. They do all the things that we've identified, but it hasn't really been clear on the deliverables. And then lastly, is to require the SRO to be a part of our big initiatives around trauma informed practices and anti bias training and anti racist training. And that's critical if they're going to be a part of our community and partnering with administrators in that way and working with our students and our parents, they need to be a part of the fiber of our learning and growing together. So ensuring that the police department gives them time to be a part of this development would be critical for us to ensure that it's even better than what we've been doing thus far. So these are things, just again, this was brief. It's a snapshot. I don't feel that this is it. I feel it's the beginning of a conversation, but just off the top of my head, I feel like these are things that really could be used and improved, improve the the relationship. So are there any questions?
Yes, I have, I probably have some questions, but my first question is, can you just tell us the why we had a SRO, why we started to have one? Because I don't know the history behind that. So what was happening in our district, what 20 years ago? That caused our district to want to have a SRO? And if that's too far back, then I guess like, Dr. Hall, you can just start where you became superintendent of our district. Why you thought it was necessary for us to have a SRO at the time? Like what was happening then?
Well, to go back, really it goes to this slide in the beginning. Are these things right here and are essential functions? This is what we've been trying to do and create positive relationships with the police department. Cause there are times when we have intersections with the police department and being proactive and trying to have someone who's a part of our team and we have a relationship with someone. We don't have someone who comes in, doesn't know anyone here. And the chance of things being quote unquote heavy handed in their response are great. So the idea is to ensure that the first time there is an issue, and this is how it works. They, the police department, they get a hold of the SRO first whenever there's a concern. And then they're the ones that help facilitate if by chance we need more people that they can come. So the idea was just to ensure that that particular part of our community has a positive relationship, that this is the idea and the thinking behind that with law enforcement to be in a proactive way.
So we have a very good relationship with law enforcement right now. So I guess at this point, I understand what everyone said about like the relationship aspect of it and how the the SRO is very helpful being in the building. But some of the things that Vince described to us, a social worker could do. And so I'm just curious why we are continuing with the status quo of having an officer when a lot of the things that were discussed, like wellness checks, could be done by a social worker.
Oh, absolutely. And honestly, I'm not trying to end this conversation. I believe this is the beginning of a conversation and I think we need to go back and look and say, okay, is there an overlap? Or how much overlap is this with a social worker? I think that's important to do an analysis of this because it's timely, Nikki. I think it's really good questions. What I wanted to present to you all now is our current reality and our current reality has been this and what was important, especially 20 plus years ago. Relationships with the police have not been what they are today and it's take, I see you Vince, it's taken a long time and we had to be persistent with trying to make that better and to ensure that the kids could see police officers in a positive light as well. So yes, I see what you're saying. And I guess also part of the recommendation is to look again, is there overlap? Are there things that truly they could do or maybe do less of? And then social workers, we'd have more social workers. Like right now, this is so early that I think it's important for us to start the conversation and look and do an analysis of what the roles are. Vince?
So three things, great question. So three things about that. So again, they were, they they're actually partners with the social workers. So taking a, taking some scenarios that are, I wouldn't say typical, but do happen with some regularity in schools. So let's talk about child abuse neglect reporting. Often through that process, law enforcement is brought in at some point. And so what was happening before we had the SRO is that that would be assigned to a variety of law enforcement partners that we didn't always know very well. And so the outcome and the way those interviews went, both with the students and families would be sometimes very difficult and unproductive. So having an SRO as a partner, and they don't always get involved with those interviews, but having them as a partner, a consistent partner, because they have that role anyway, has provided much better care for those families on that. So on the child abuse neglect reporting, it's been good to have a consistent partner in partnership with us, not to replace the social worker, but in partnership with our social workers. So sometimes those cases are pretty serious, rarely, but they're very serious. It might involve the police and taking kids into custody. And having that law enforcement officer knows the families and children has been very helpful there. On the mental health side similarly, because sometimes kids have mental health crises outside of our school day. So they'll work with our team almost always, but if they're calling the ambulance at 6:00 PM because of a suicide attempt at a home with one of our high school students, that SRO is going to join that call. And they work with us. So they might tell us the next day what's happening with the particular student and may have known that there were issues going into that incident. So it's much more effective. Again, as opposed to randomly assigned to law enforcement officers that don't have the CIT training, don't have the mental health training to BJC, their efficacy is less. They could be kind, but just not as skilled. Again, so we, there is some benefit there as well. So in those two particular instances, and then the third one is when we've had some, I mean, we've had incidents on, for example, camp, on campus that require some interviews, some bullying and harassment that rose to potential crime where parents are calling the police. So rather than have outside law enforcement come in, interview kids, not know the students, we're able to use our SRO to conduct those interviews. They already know him or her are comfortable sharing and they're able to get some resolution there. Again, it's an instance where the parents have called the police. So our social workers are not able to intervene at that point and our SRO is able to be more effective and then report back to us as a follow up. Because often in this bullying harassment cases, there'll be some residual follow up and things we need to do as a school to protect those kids. But because we're partnered with an SRO who's in our building, that happens much better. So it really is as a partner, not a replacement for our social, but that is an excellent question.
And I, I'd just like to add one thing and you know, this is sometimes difficult to talk about without thinking of very specific cases, which I don't want to do. But I do want to say that the way that we are using an SRO is very much as a partner for the administrator. And our building principals sometimes deal with some very tricky, very delicate situations that do in fact cross boundaries. We are mandatory reporters, not only on child abuse, but there are other kinds of things that have to be reported. I cannot emphasize enough the comfort level of being able to talk through a case with someone that we know, that someone that is part of our team, that is not going to jump to the most extreme situation, to know that we can be completely transparent and to know that that person is working with us in the best interest of a child. If we have to make those reports to a stranger, they might be equally skilled and empathetic, but the trust is sometimes not there and that makes those cases much more difficult to handle get a good outcome. And it makes it a lot more stressful for our administrators. So I I know that they appreciate having someone that they is known to them, that is with us, that is part of our team, that they can talk through some of those issues. And so the SRO serves that role for us.
Roxanne, I have a quick question. I'm I'm a little confused by that. So are you saying that they're reporting it to the officer? Instead of contacting child protective services or are they?
We always contact child protective services, but as Vince has said, sometimes we'll have parents that make a report of a theft or we will have an altercation at school that might, and Vince, you can chime in, that might involve drugs, that might involve certain things, right? Our goal is to always act in the best interest of the child, to handle it at the lowest level possible, follow all of our norms and protocols that you're well aware of.
Right. No, I understood that. My question was when we were talking about reporting.
So some of the reporting that we have to do, I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about child abuse reporting, but there are certain kinds of crimes that we would have to make sure that we report, right?
That arose was about reporting child abuse neglect. So that's what my question is about. It's not about the other stuff.
Okay.
I wanted to confirm whether or not it is being discussed with the officer or the SRO before it's being reported.
No, in those situations, we would report. And if Vince, you can, you you handle much of those with the SRO interface.
Yeah. Yeah. So with child abuse neglect reporting, I mean, all of our paid professional staff, quite, in fact, most of our staff are mandated reporters. We would get training regularly. We talk about them amongst our staff to make sure we're doing it in a way that's we're supportive of the students, supportive of the families and to really be solution focused. We, whenever you call child abuse neglect hotline, the SRO will get a notice of that report either from child abuse neglect reporting or from us. And so what happens is once we make the report, we'll bring him in. And often he doesn't have a role. It depends on, depends on the scenario and what the concerns are. But he's always apprised, keeping an eye out because things can happen over the weekends and stuff when school's out. So then he has sort of a heads up and give you helpful. But there are a handful of instances where if it's a particular serious report, that he may be involved in part of the investigative team. And so he's been, this has been a good partner. And what's been nice about having the SRO is there's just some consistency in terms of how that is communicated to them, how they work with families and students, how that information comes back to us to help the families out. And and when you don't have the SRO or the partnership with a consistent person in the, in the, you know, law enforcement community, and it's not, it's just a systemic, you don't, you just have a hotchpotch of folks that respond and and it's, it's just not as good for the families. I'm, I'm, I want to be clear, I guess, as I'm hearing myself talk, the SROs, while they're helpful for us, I, in my professional opinion, I think they're helpful for the families and the students, which is the most important. And I think, and if they're not, that's what we have to kind of revisit. But it's really about supporting families and students. And so the extent that I think they're helpful to me is only because I think they're helpful for the students, not because they make my job easier. It's more about, is that helping that kid? And I know that when students have mental health crises and there's a familiar face knocking on the door with the M T, they feel better, you know, they just do, like they know that person and they're like, okay, I'm coming out and I'll go to the hospital.
So Vince, yeah, I appreciate what you just said is really clear because we do have our perspective and how we see this role can impact the MRH community. But you know, on record in my time being in the district, I have not had concerns brought to me about the role from families. And so hearing from the public forum was really helpful and it's good to hear this perspective, especially now with everything that's going on. And if there are concerns or we have, you know, too narrow of a view, then we need to hear this and we need to talk about it. But I just wanted to make sure based on the things that were brought to me, like this is, this is what we have experienced. This is where we are. But of course, we're not necessarily saying this is it, we're stopping it. Stopping, you know, the conversation.
Yeah, I I appreciate that. I mean, and I think it's pretty clear that we've gotten to hear some of the perceptions from, you know, staff and administration. We now have some more clarity on the specific contractual relationship. I think with the two documents that are linked in board docs this evening. I would, I mean, I think that there, there are some good questions raised both by Nikki and by, you know, some of our, our community members to look at the data. And I think that that is part of our charge with our recently approved equity policy to, you know, to talk about the frequency with which we are using the SRO officer, you know, how, how often there is contact with different groups of students. And yeah, a further discussion about how and if it's appropriate for that intervention to be part of our trauma informed equity work within the district, I think is all stuff that I would like propose to move to a work session in July or, you know, this, only this summer. As, you know, we're in a position right now of, of beginning a new school year and and setting some, some different precedents, if that is warranted. So also trying to cut off conversation this evening, but it seems like there's probably some additional data that we need and some additional information that we're going to need to pull together to have a more fruitful discussion about what going forward looks like.
Key, if I may, I just have one clarifying question for Vince because Vince, I know you, you said this, I just missed it. You said that the SRO does not have his gun when he's on in our buildings, right?
Thanks for asking. What I said was, I saw, I I heard that and I just couldn't remember if they did because I never, I don't think of him that way. Because I don't think, I I don't think of him arresting people and keeping us safe to the use of firearms. So I couldn't, I just don't know if he has it because I don't ever think of him having that. When I think about our SROs, I think about someone who's kind and a partner and is a problem solving partner of our team. I don't ever, and that's why I was saying I don't remember because I can't, like, does he have one? I don't remember. Cause that's not how I see his role. So I was just, it was my own, I wasn't able to answer that question because I don't ever think of him that way, I suppose.
Okay. Thank you Vince. I apologize. I wasn't trying to put you on the spot. Okay. Thank you, Vince. I apologize. I wasn't trying to put you on the spot.
No, no, that was a confusing answer, I admit. Don't worry. Yeah.
Can I just make one recommendation for ahead of the work session? Is if perhaps administration could bring some maybe proposed edits to the MOU or updates to the MOU documents within both cities. Just, it doesn't have to be, you know, fully word crafted, but bullet points about things that we would want to add that. I think this is a very fruitful discussion. I don't think we've had this kind of discussion before. And it's, as Karen said, really timely, but I think those MOUs, I think were like two to three years old at least in terms of last time they were revised. So, you know, that would be worth discussing in addition to the data, Katie, that you suggested.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, obviously the presentation we had last fall about body worn cameras is something that's a new development in both police departments since these agreements were put in place. So yeah, I think there's, there's probably some, some reflection on things that could be updated based on current experiences here.
I would, I would also like to suggest that we add some information or some ideas on what we would consider to be the essential need from our SRO. And exactly what are we? What, what are we hoping to do going forward with this position?
So you want to update the essential functions?
I'd like to, I'd like, I'd like to know what are the essential functions that have been assigned to the school in the past? And that way we can frame a debate about where we want to go in the future. I don't think I've got a clear idea yet exactly what the, let's say, what the top five things we would expect the SRO to do.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's fair in terms of transparency and clarity in the partnership. And then as the MOU, our input in the updates and honestly, with the job description and the essential functions, we need to have input on that.
And then, and then ways to measure that as well.
Yes.
And, and I do want to say one more thing about Nikki's great question because I was thinking more about it. Just because I don't know whether or not our SRO carries a gun or not, doesn't mean that if he is, that's not impacting our students in a negative way. I want to be clear about that. That's just me as a 57 year old, soon to be 57, white male perspective, not thinking about or not worried about that. But that doesn't mean that our young people, that that's doesn't triggering for them. So I wanted to be clear about sharing that as well.
Vince, I appreciate you so much for saying that. I really do. Thank you so much.
No worries.
And then what, and also in thinking about all of this, are we asking kids what they think about their SRO? Like, we don't have that assessment. There's a lot of assessment. I mean, there are none. Other than like I said here with the annual evaluation, we give them information, but that's it. I don't know what the whole program is about, the evaluation. So it's, it's not transparent enough.
Great. Sounds like we've got some, some to do's then before a, a July work session. And again, appreciate putting this on the agenda fairly quickly in response to obviously outreach that our community's been making and the, the conversations around the role of police officers in our, in our community writ large. So, all right, we will move along then in the agenda. I know the next section is on COVID updates. We obviously had a work session earlier this week dug a bit deeper into aspects of this. So I don't, we don't need to belabor, you know, information that has already been, you know, shared with the board, but did want to make sure there is things that have developed in the last three days, as I'm sure there probably could be, that there's opportunity to share that at this point. So let's see, I think Roxanna, the alternative methods of instruction, employee pay, federal law, any updates for us there?
Just not, not a whole lot of progress. We did, I did want to tell you, I told you, we went through ECC and we were able to determine that we could have students onsite in tier one and tier two. I was able to walk through the elementary today and I know Amber had the architects go through earlier. We do believe we are okay to have all kids onsite in tier one, tier two. We may have to do some engineering controls with some Plexiglas in some of the classrooms because we do not have individual student desks, but the desks that we have are long enough that, that with some minor modifications, we would still make our social distancing requirement. So that's looking really good pre K through six. Chris mentioned in his presentation at the budget session that we've also worked through some preliminary staffing needs, which include, I mean, the three things that I am hearing consistently, just so you're aware of what, what we're thinking about right now. In a tier two scenario where we still have significant community spread and we are trying to ensure that cohorts of kids remain together and there's no commingling of students. We may have a need for additional TAs because we'll have to schedule bathroom breaks. We'll have to schedule very tightly controlled movement through the building and, and particularly with young kids, making sure we have enough bodies to do that would be important. I'm also hearing concerns about custodial support. In turn, if we're eating in classrooms, for example, we have to have multiple frequent disinfecting and cleaning. So we may need some part time folks or we may have to reassign some of our evening shift work. So Amber and I have begun some very preliminary conversations around what that could look like. And then Vince submitted to us today, a proposal from the nurses. They might like to bring on one nurse's assistant who could be there onsite to help us if we have significant days of student illness and/or if a nurse would be out, we'd have someone consistent and known to the, to the students. So it looks like staffing wise, in terms of classroom teachers, we should be good. But these auxiliary players that would be very important in the various tiers and scenarios we're looking at do appear to be in need. We'll know more as we tighten down specifics in each building in terms of their procedures. Again, choices that we make in terms of traffic flow and pattern impact how we're able to clean. It also impacts who we need to try to help us mitigate congestion. I mean, we've got those seven factors we're looking at all the time. So, you know, where are the points of congestion? Where are, how can we socially distance? And on and on and on. So I'll talk to you more about that as we continue to work. But the good news is we, we do think we have space and we do have some planning that we're doing to try to keep our K six kids at least on campus in both tier one and tier two.
I had, I noticed something in the budget discussion earlier this evening that there were, there's a plan to have scrubbers being used to address the atmospherics. Do we know, is there any training available on the, the replacement of the filters in those scrubbers that they're taken care of safely, that the people who do the replacement are, you know, properly gowned and whatever, whatever might be necessary?
I'm going to jump in there because Chris actually listed that wrong. They're not scrubbers, they're bathroom cleaners. So it's an all in one incredible hands free cleaner that we can hit every spot in the bathroom with a wand type.
Okay, so they're not, they're not air scrubbers then?
They're not air scrubbers, correct.
All right. I understand. I was just wondering. Okay. Thanks.
All right. Food service, technology, tuition based programs. Chris, I'll assume that those are your bullets if there's anything to add there.
Just briefly, Irene and I are meeting regularly. She's scheduled to deliver her ideas and thoughts around a plan for feeding our students in, in either tier one, two or three, well, excuse me, tier one or tier two onsite. We met today and had, and furthered that conversation. Next week, we're going to be meeting, start meeting with the building principals as well as Rachel Ward, our compliance, our compliance person who manages, makes sure that we're in scope on all of our attendance procedures and such. One of the things that's going to be complicated in any of the, any, any of the tiers that we find ourselves in is making sure that we have sufficient time for the students to eat their meal and then to clean up after them, as Roxanne has mentioned. And also to, to make sure that we're, we're able to move through the building in such a way as to we're minimizing the impact on instructional time. You know, anytime you take something that's done en masse in a cafeteria and you distribute it out into the school building, schedules have to change, which is why we're bringing Rachel on board to make sure that we're thinking about things as strategically as possible. Each of the buildings, we, as we unpacked a little bit more today, we discovered each of the buildings presents its own unique set of challenges, I should say, to delivering food service in any of the tiers. So depending on the, on the building and the grade level and the age of student that we're dealing with, that could range from anywhere from spaced in the cafeteria itself or food service delivered directly to the classrooms. So it's a, it's a fairly laborious process to do the thinking through that. So we're trying to stay out of the weeds and stay a little bit higher level. But we're at that level where we need to engage with the principals because they, better than anyone else, know the flow of their buildings and how those changes might impact the instruction that they're responsible for. So I'm looking forward to those meetings. These are interesting problems. I like a good problem to solve. So we're, I'm actually looking forward and geeking out a little bit on the fact that we're going to be able to have these rich problems to, to tackle next week. So with technology, there's really no updates other than tonight on the consent agenda, I added the swivel robots. So the swivel robot is a device in which you can attach a, a recording device, like an iPod touch in the case that we're planning. And the teacher wears a device around their neck on a lanyard. And this little swivel robot follows, you attach the mobile device to it and it follows the teacher around the classroom. There's also three microphones that are coming with the units that we're ordering that you can play strategically in the classroom so that you're not only capturing the teacher, but you're also capturing any in-class dialogue or conversation that's happening so that they can record those lessons and make those available on our learning management platform to students that may not be able to be in the classroom for perhaps a COVID related scenario, or perhaps even if they're sick. So the, as we were, as Cindy was mentioning earlier, with the younger students and their increased engagement with math instruction particularly, for all of our students, this can be a resource that if they need to go back and capture a geometry lecture or elementary math lesson and parent wants to support their child. So we're planning to order 48 of those. So as soon as the purchase orders out of the system, we'll go ahead and send that since we approved that purchase tonight. And the other aspect of that is the iPod touch, which we feel is, while we've wandered away a little bit from the Apple mobile devices, we feel that for the price, those bring us the best quality equipment at the, at the best price point and also the most durable. So we're looking forward to getting those in and learning how to use them and then how to properly deploy them. This point, we're looking at 48 of them, which should be able to give us a good quantity to pass around the, the teachers as needed. And other than that, it's learning, you know, I think everything that we do on the virtual side is anchored with its learning just because that is the platform that we'll use for our, our teachers to deliver instruction and also to collect the evidence of learning. So we're developing some norms and procedures to make sure that we have consistency throughout all the buildings and grade levels so that parents, students and teachers all understand and know what to expect when, when using that platform in any, in any capacity, whether it be onsite or in a virtual scenario. And then tuition based programs. You know, adding that cottage over the ECC is going to allow us to expand outward a little bit and provide a little bit more room to space out those kids. Cindy had a very in-depth meeting with her teachers last week and they've come up with some very good ideas and plans on how to make sure that those students are spaced out appropriately. One thing that I'm disappointed with is that we have to stop doing the, this ties back to food service, the, the family style meal. I think that's one of the really cool aspects of our preschool is being able to sit down as a preschool family and, and enjoy their meals together. That's unfortunately going to have to stop, but we're trying to find a way to replicate that as closely as possible. That's another thing that we started to discuss today with Irene. So beyond that, we are planning to have preschool at this point. But again, as, as situations change, we'll, we'll revisit that. And that's my updates.
Thank you. Are there any COVID Prop E updates or Buildings and Grounds updates, Amber?
I'll share. Itner mentioned earlier that they've been through the buildings, measuring spaces, classrooms twofold for the projects themselves, the bond projects themselves, but also to help us with classroom layout. So about a week ago, they published two guidelines, one that was for COVID-19 school design, which gave us a checklist to go through and assess pieces of our building that we need to look at. And then also a second guide that included information just about the virus itself, cleaning techniques. I was on a call with other facility directors earlier this week and this was the hot thing on the street. So I'm glad that we're already moving on it. They did complete measurements at the high school and middle school today. So we are going to start coordinating with building principals next week to look at classrooms and layouts in spaces. I'll jump right into the next Buildings and Grounds update. Custodians have been busy in the buildings. We are over 50% done with our summer cleaning and maintenance projects, which means we're feeling very confident that we'll be done by the end of July with all of those things so that we can switch our focus at that time to COVID-19, whatever our reentry plans are, which will be, I'm positive, some furniture layout changes, which we're talking about, and also stocking supplies and just preparing for whichever reentry plan we go with. And then one other thing I wanted to touch on is we presented, Cindy Northern and I presented our first draft of the transportation reentry plan to the task force yesterday. Great feedback, great ideas of other areas to look at. We've got some next steps in place and we are moving along with that plan for reentry. One of the major things that we want to do is registration period, similar to Discover Club in kindergarten, so that we have a very good understanding of who is wanting to be a part of the transportation program in the fall so that we can be even more efficient with our bus routes and bus stops so that our trips can be quick and smooth to each building. And that's what I have.
Thank you very much. Ed, any communications updates?
Well, I, I was going to recap what we talked about on Monday about the kind of centralized, coordinated regional release of reentry information, but I think we covered that pretty well and you know why we're doing it, you know the value of doing it. But Katie, you asked if there was anything new this week. Yeah, we're, you know, district by district, we're, we're going to strike some important common themes in these individual district messages. One of them will be that all schools will be starting on their scheduled dates. And that kind of sounds like a duh, but surveys of families in other districts have revealed that some people hold these assumptions that start dates won't happen as planned. So, you know, it just needs to be emphasized. We're also going to emphasize that the partnership between families and schools is key to student success in whatever the learning environment is, in class or at home. And we will also emphasize that school staff will get professional development on screening student health conditions. And we will encourage parents to be aware of the health of their kids and only send them to school if they are feeling well. One other thing that's new and big this week is we are continuing our, what I would call drastic overhaul of the district website. The aim there, of course, is to smooth out and to simplify procedures. procedures for families. My communication specialist and the director of student services have created a much more logical and accessible presentation, especially for the upcoming online registration for 1 through 12. We're also very, very close, maybe tomorrow, to activating the all-new look for nutrition services. It's, it's like that feeling you get from a, you know, that really thorough spring house cleaning. As for internal communications about how reentry looks, I, I feel pretty strongly that we need to look at the feedback we get from the staff surveys before I put together anything solid or semi-solid. So that's what's happening in my department.
And did your robo-call get more response to?
Yeah, it did. I'm glad you brought that up. And I know that because one day this week, Tuesday, I went around to each of the meal distribution sites and at each site, someone said, hey, you must have sent out a new message, didn't you? It's like, yeah, I did. So that's not scientific, but it stands to reason that it was the robo-call. So thank you for the, the kernel, the idea.
Great. And, and Vince, any updates for student services?
Yeah, five brief updates. Ed touched on one. So as key communicator for the district, please let families know if they're inquiring about enrollment. All bits online. It's opened up now for grades K through 12. And to Ed's point, it's much better and clearer on the district website. Parents can go to a couple of different places, but they can just go to the district website, the individual building, and there, there's now a registration enrollment tab for every building. So that's been launched. It's going well so far. The nurses and I watched a 90-minute webinar. I guess we didn't watch it. We listened to the 90-minute webinar. It was actually decent because it did involve the Commissioner of Education, Dr. Margie Van Deven, the Director of the Department of Health and Senior Services, Dr. Randall Williams, and the Infectious Disease Specialist at Children's Hospital. So these were kind of local statewide folks that talked about reopening schools specifically. It was a good webinar. I have shared that with Karen and Roxanna, and I think that might have some value for our admin team all to look at it, just so that we're operating as we go into the decision-making recommendation phase, to have a comments, common language and common understanding about the state of COVID-19 in Missouri. I found it to be a decent webinar. Third, our nurses on their own, Roxanna suggested it and they took it and ran. They completed a six-hour contact tracing, a training online, which is not very exciting, but they, they plugged in there. Two of the three are certificated, did that on their own. So now they have a full of understanding of contact tracing. Our school nurses will not be lead contact tracers for the St. Louis County, but in working in, but now they know how, how thoroughly it works, they'll be better partners for our health department. Roxanna touched on it. Fourth thing is that our team has put forth budgetary recommendations, both on the supply side and the staffing side. And we're continuing to work with Dr. Campbell and local experts on new disease protocols for the coming school year around fevers and coughs and how to work with students about staying home and the kind of testing they need to get, et cetera. So those are the five updates on student services.
Thank you so much. Any questions from board about COVID-19 updates here? All right. Ed, we'll move on to the academic calendar. I know the brief update you already mentioned and emailed to us this week.
Yeah, the, the 21, 22 calendar is similar, almost identical to the, the calendar for the upcoming school year. So I'll just hit a very brief list of highlights. First day of the school year will be a Tuesday. It's not great, but it was acceptable to the committee. Winter break will actually be one day longer than the one for the coming year, 13 days. First day of second semester will fall on a Monday. Again, very few people prefer that, but it's one of the concessions that, that committee made because of the new school start date law. President's Day, once again, is going to be an attendance day. We have a Plan B again for all employees for whom that is a paid holiday. In case you're wondering, the parent members of the calendar committee had no objections to this plan. It was pretty clear that they understood that, you know, making President's Day an attendance day is just part of the overall effort to ensure that we wrap up for the second week of June. Spring break again, next to last week in March. Final day of classes, we hope, will be the first Thursday in June. And for the second year in a row, the committee identified specific dates which could be converted to inclement weather makeup days if needed. And you may recall, that's part of that new guideline we adopted for the coming school year. The aim is to forewarn families about possible makeup dates. So that's it. Not too exciting.
Thank you very much. Any questions or concerns there? Hearing none, we can move on to the infrastructure bids. Amber?
Chris, can you add, while Chris is working on that, we'll be joined by Joe Grassel with Tremco, Kurt and Brian from Integrated Facility Services. And thank you, gentlemen, for sticking it out for our meeting this evening. But an even bigger thank you, I think we'll probably keep saying this over and over again to the community for their support to our students and our district. With most previous projects, items like what I'm about to talk, talk about, were either removed at some point, dropped to the bottom of the list, or just didn't make the scope of a project. I was very vividly elated during our long-range Facility Task Force meetings when these projects remained on the list. It was obvious that the community and the board recognized that in order to keep maintaining these beautiful spaces inside, we have to keep the structure of our buildings solid. So we, the projects listed or the bids listed here, I want to make two points about. This is, and this is on, just for communication this evening, and then will be brought back again at the end of the month on July 30th for approval. There are two things that will be changed. You'll notice that on the ECC bid, it says not to exceed $300,000, and that's because of a couple of changes. One, Joe can probably talk a little bit more about. We had, as, as he was reaching out to vendors or contractors to ensure that they would be prepared, prepared for this job, our window bids, that company was unable to bond because they are so busy right now. Joe did some great work and was able to reach out to another bidder on the list and we are moving along with that process. And I believe that numbers will shift a little bit. I'll let Joe speak on that in a minute. And I also want to give the floor to Joe to talk about what this procedure, this process of bidding is. Joe, I think you're muted right now. Joe, are you unable to mute, unmute?
Hopefully he didn't fall asleep during the rest of the, the meeting.
We were just texting.
Oh, good.
I was making sure he was still with us. And he's calling. I, Chris, can you help at all to unmute him from your location?
I sent the request to unmute him. Let me see if I can manually do it.
Okay.
I don't think it lets me do that. I can just request.
It looks like there is. Joe, can you hear us now? Or can you? It looks like you're unmuted from our end. All right. Let's see, Kurt, are you able to join? Okay. Well, I'm actually going to bring this back to you on the 30th and we'll see if we can try this again. I won't drag this out longer. We'll make sure that they're able to connect and speak with us. The two changes that I mentioned to you will only bring the cost down. That is what we're anticipating. Windows will come. Joe received numbers today and they came in less than our original bid. So I didn't want to give you a summary sheet because it will be changing. But currently, right now, what is in the scope of work for the facilities? I shared this with you before and Julie touched on it earlier with her presentation. So at the high school, middle school building, we'll have roof restoration and replacement, tuck pointing, HVAC replacement, as well as installing controls on those units and replacing windows, 102 windows in our high school. Elementary school is roof restoration, HVAC replacement, installing controls also, and then replacing windows in that facility. And ECC, as we know, has had a lot of work done, so minimal work there. We've got some tuck pointing on the front and around the deck and also a roof replacement. Any questions? We had a little bit more information to share with you, but we will bring that back to the next meeting.
And when are we anticipated to start this work again, Amber?
As soon as you all approve after the June 30th meeting. We are, we have a meeting, sorry, slated with the contractors on June 26th to talk timeline. And then when it's brought to you all, we'll roll into that schedule.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
All right.
Great, thank you.
We'll move right along then to the finance section. Chris, go ahead.
All right, let me move everyone around here. Give me just a second. As I'm doing this, I realized that I did not share my screen for the budget workshop earlier, which is unfortunate, but you all had access to the presentation, so. All right, we won't spend too much time on this. We're nearing the end of the year. You approved a budget amendment last month, so we'll jump right in. The items of interest really encapsulate all of the, all of the big things. We are tracking right along where we expected. One change that we got today is with the state budget shifts. It looks like the, the June payment is going to be significantly less than we even had been told earlier. We were warned that that could possibly happen. However, we, we collected, at this point, we've collected $22,000 more on the state side than we were anticipating and that we had originally budgeted for. So we will be able to absorb that state reduction without much trouble at all. Luckily, unlike some other school districts that are receiving millions of dollars in reductions this time, you know, on this month, ours is, ours is much less as, as a result of our state funding percentage. So we are truly in good shape there. Everything else is tracking right along where we would expect on the revenue side. And we will bring you the final financial statements and the final budget amendment at the end of the month to close out the year. So on the operating fund side, 86% of our revenue is coming from the local sources. And you can see, since we've made that budget adjustment, 10% on the state side. Likewise, on the expense side, again, things are tracking at or better than we were anticipating. Of course, since we have not physically been in session since the middle of March, a number of those expenses are drastically diminished from where they typically would be, which is great because we need to save a little bit and build a little financial energy moving into the next fiscal year. So luckily, we've, we've been able to capture and realize a number of items that we've been able to save on. But again, that's, that's actually looking to be positive as we're coming into this unknown fiscal year. Salaries and benefits are tracking exactly where we would expect them to be at this time of the year as our purchase services are significantly lower. However, as we're wrapping up the year and cleaning up any of those invoices that are sitting out there, closing out any of those open purchase orders, I expect this number to be a little bit higher as we come into the end of the month. As we move along with debt service, we are fully collected 100% on debt service funds. We did receive our delinquent taxes, excuse me, protested taxes to the tune of about $3.2, $3.1 million in, in May, mid-May. So that was, that was fantastic that we were able to get that on time, even ahead of schedule. I think a number of us has found that working from home is quite efficient. And I think our county collector realized that himself as well. Salary and benefits makes up 76% of our expenses. So it's a, I think that's a testament to the energy and resource that MRH commits to its people to make sure we have well-trained faculty and staff to deliver our students the highest quality education that we can. And here again is the page that I'd wanted, which would, wishes that I would start with, which is the bottom line. And right now, we are budgeting to end the year at 41.9% fund balance. And we've, we're budgeting to an ending fund balance. Year-to-date, we're at $12.89 cash and banks. So finances are strong. We're well-poised financially to enter into this unknown fiscal year and this, the financial climate that we're, that we're experiencing right now. So I feel that we are well-positioned to absorb some of those downward pressures that we'll experience as a result of the COVID crisis. Any questions? All right. Without any further ado, I will bring up the bank bids. I'll go ahead and talk about it. There's really not a whole lot to show here, other than I need my notes. So give me just a second to get those up. So I'll start with the timeline. The timeline was a little bit more accelerated than I had initially planned and how, and how I shared with you earlier in the school year. But COVID really sort of put a kink in everything. It's pretty much all energies had to be focused on reimagining public education. So at MRH, so we were able to get that RFP out. Another challenge that we experienced was, this was our first virtual RFP, so there was no in-person anything. We didn't even accept mail for them. We set up a public drop box. We did a Zoom call for our public opening. I think we only had participate one banking institution, and I'm really glad that Citizens threw their hat in the ring. They've been our banking institution for some years and they are, in fact, the only respondent that we had. I was a little bit surprised by that with the, especially over the last three years, as we've been steadily increasing our cash balances. I was expecting to see a few more responses, but we did do our due diligence. We got the RFP out on the district website early. We got it out in the St. Louis Post-Dispatch, which, if you had any experience with listing things in the Post-Dispatch, it's really expensive. So I was really hoping we'd, we'd get a few more respondents. But nevertheless, Citizens is a fantastic banking institution. We have a very good relationship with them and I had a good conversation with Jeff Files, one of their executives, last week, and we are beginning our plans. He and I are in alignment on some of our, our vision for automating some of our, right now, inefficient processes, including wire transfers and ACHs between us, them and other, other vendors. So they're going to be a good partner as we, as we go through the next year. So tonight, I'll be asking you to approve a one-year agreement with Citizens National Bank. And then after that one year and an evaluation, we will recommend to either go out for a bid again or extend that contract to four years for a total of five, which would be the limit by state statute. Any questions there? Great. So I'm going to move on to fee-based services. This, don't, don't be put off by this. There's a lot of slides, but I'll move through them quickly. It's, it's really a high-level look at our fee-based programs and how we were able to end the year. Soon as I find the presentation. There it is. There we go. Y'all see the slides there?
Yep.
Fantastic. All right, here we go. So we'll start with food service, and these are our meal counts, August through March. March typically isn't the benchmark that we, that we measure. However, this year, it happened to be the last time that we served meals in person to students in our spaces. So this, these are our breakfast counts. The paid, well, these are broken up into our free, reduced, or full pay status families and students. You can see that our paid makes up the lion's share with reduced in the middle there in red with our students that qualify for free lunches in the blue. So one of the, one of the things that Irene and I and her, her managers will be doing is digging into this data a little bit more to understand. I mean, December, December makes a lot of sense because of winter break, because, you know, there's just less days that students are eating. So one of the things we'll need to do is count the number of days that meals are served and make sure that we're controlling for that all, all across. But one of the things that we'll be getting into is how, what we serve and when we serve it impacts how many kids are buying it. So it really speaks to the quality, give us a, a window into the quality and how kids are enjoying or not our meals. For all intents and purposes, from what you see here, they're enjoying breakfast quite a lot, especially in October. Coming to lunch, it's really the same format. It's just tipped on its side. So again, the paid students make up the lion's share. Again, October wins, so the assumption is there that there is potentially more days in October. Either that, or we serve tacos, pizza, or Chinese food on, those are the three big meals that our students absolutely love. And they typically, when we first started those meals, we would often get right up to the end and almost running out. So we'll, we'll include that in, in our study as we're going through the summer. So seamless summer, this is the mechanism through which we are able to serve our, our students in the district and any student that shows up sacked lunch and breakfast while we're going through this COVID crisis. So you can see at the ECC, they are, they are partaking at a greater level than the other buildings. But you will also see that as we're getting deeper into, into this, that the counts are diminishing. So as we're now into June, June has not yet been reported on this chart. So the, the numbers are declining. From what Irene is telling me, we're averaging about 100 students per day. And when we started, we were over 200. So I think that, that may speak to either they're growing weary of coming out every day, or perhaps folks are not struggling as much as they were initially through this ordeal. But we are collecting some data on the survey that is out with the community right, right now, to gain a little bit of insight into what we can expect through the summer. And if this happens again, as we go into the fall and the winter, what we, what we will need to do to address that on the, the delivery side. So the part that I don't necessarily like to discuss, but we have to, is the, is the financial side. So the school nutrition service revenue, the budget to projected, this was our original budget on the revenue side next to the budget projected on the expense side. So you can see that the revenue bar was far under the total expenditures, which isn't all that uncommon for food service. We're, we're not supposed to make money. We're supposed to, at worst, break even. And when we come into the balance sheet here, you can see that on our projected to the original budget, so we're projected to be, we're projected to be at a loss of $186,000. And with the June, July through June, $132,000. So actually, a little bit less of a loss, given the, the what we're dealing with now. We are serving less meals, so the expenses are greatly reduced there. Then we come into Discover Club. And you can see here, we were projecting on the original budget on the revenue side. And Discover Club has remained constant, even though we stopped collecting fees in the middle of March, we were able to still wind up in the positive on this side. However, the original budget was expecting a $109,000 surplus, and that was cut to, excuse me, hit the wrong button, $60,000. So quite a significant change in revenue there. That brings us to preschool. So here's the revenue compared to the expenses. So the projected is the green here and the original budget. So you can see, since we stopped the preschool program, we also stopped collecting those fees, which brought us back over here on the expense side to our original budget and our projected expenses are right about where balanced on the salary side, benefit side, projected quite a lot less there. And then purchase service and all the other supplies are negligible differences. The greatest expense, of course, in preschool is on the staffing side, so. And here's the balance sheet, whoop, for preschool. So we had originally expected a loss, a net loss of 115,000, just under 116,000 as a result of this and the loss of that revenue over those few months, $263,000 in loss on that. Again, it seems really bad, and it, it's anytime we take a loss that great, it's not anything to celebrate. However, the bright side of this is because we were, the students weren't in session on the financial side, this didn't end poorly for us. Utilities are down. Some of our greater expenses that we have with our instructional programs are coming into the space, spring, and professional development and travel. All those combined serve to soften the blow from this, from this hit. So again, MRH remains financially strong as we're coming into the next fiscal year, and I have all confidence that we'll be able to weather this storm.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions there? All right. We'll move on to board communications. Calendar of events. Obviously, we have a budget approval. The June 30th, we've talked about a few times here. That will end this fiscal year for the, the school board. We had discussed several months ago about moving our monthly work sessions to Thursdays from Tuesdays. And so you may notice that we don't actually have work sessions on the calendar for the, the beginning in June. Obviously, we're going to need some work sessions here. So well, I, I'm open to our work session in July being either the 7th or the 9th of July. And hopefully, we can find a date that's agreeable to admin and, and board as far as that's concerned. But I think we are going to need to meet before the regularly scheduled July board meeting. That was just kind of the one thing I wanted to flag. Obviously, we have a lot going on this summer. I'll move forward then to board committee report. Safe and inspirational spaces, any report there, team?
I don't have anything to report.
I was gonna say, hearing nothing. I will move it along here. Joe's place. Brandy or Ralph, anything there?
We had a, a slight meeting. But with it being the summer, we were mostly talking about fundraising and COVID, and the House parents are doing. I mean, they've just been phenomenal in this, in this time of need. But that was really it. We did do the, I think we talked since we did the drive-by. I don't remember. But we did like a parade for the graduates. But I think we've talked since then. So that's all I have.
Great. Thank you both. And then we have decided not to attend the virtual MSBA gathering. But that, you know, obviously, stay tuned for future opportunities from MSBA here. Some additional details that we'll be hearing from them, I'm sure, as we approach the fall semester here. We'll move on to action items then for this evening. We had a policy batch that we looked at last board meeting. And so can I have a motion to approve that policy batch?
I move to approve policies BBE, BHA, GBE, BC, GBLB, GCD, GCI, GCPB, GCPE, GDC, GDI, GDPC, IC, IG, AEB, IICC, IKF, JEC, JFC, JHG, and JO as presented in the 2019 C policy batch.
Thank you, Brandy. Thank you, Nikki, for the second. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. The base, motion on that.
I move to accept the bid from Citizens National Bank for banking services.
Sorry, Cat.
Thank you, Brandy and Wes. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. 2021, 2022 academic calendar.
Move to adopt the, oh, sorry.
You got it.
Move to adopt the 2021, 2022 academic calendar as presented.
Second.
Thank you, Brandy. Thank you, Nikki. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Professional development plan, a motion, please.
We'll go approve the professional development plan as submitted.
Second.
Thank you, Wes. Thank you, Brandy. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Can I have a motion to go into executive session?
I move to enter executive session in accordance with section 610.021, subsections 2, 3, 9, and 13, and section 610.022 of the revised statutes of Missouri on June 18th, 2020, for the following specific reasons: personnel matters, real estate matters.
My second.
Thank you, Brandy. Thank you, Nikki. Cat, can you do a roll call for us, please?
Rob?
Aye.
Mr. Posley? Can you give us a thumbs up? Mr. Posley, you're muted.
Can you? Hear me now? Sorry about that.
Ms. Herndon Miller?
Aye.
Ms. Knapper?
Aye.
Ms. Langston?
Aye.
Mr. Shemalier?
Aye.
Ms. Kaufman?
Hi. All right. Thank you for, our community partners for sticking out this meeting, and the rest of the board will reconvene in a closed session here in a few minutes. So thank you very much.